Okay, this is a regular, are we on?
Yes.
All right, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice to this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted a regular meeting scheduled for the year. Notice the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January 31st, 2025, and the Two River Times on January 23rd, 2025. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and as remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file with the Office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to the members of the public, which has requested such information in accordance to the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to approve this statement in the minutes of the meeting.
He's got the speech.
Oh, where am I?
On the agenda, right? No, the other guy.
Okay. Before proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants or experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in Borough ordinances and the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. It is quasi judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and councilor. The zoning board does not enact the Borough land use laws and regulations, the Borough Council does that. The zoning board has not enforced the land use laws of the Borough Fairhaven. This is the responsibility of the Borough Code Enforcement Officer. This board deals with appeals for relief from the requirements of the Borough's land use laws or denials by the zoning officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the running regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards of proof. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always upon the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to the specifically requested. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment to the zoning plan. Variances related to the future use of the land are not intended or authorized to remedy temporary or even personal situations. Roll call, please, show.
Mr. Chesney?
Here.
Andrew, here. Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Mr. Borthing?
Here.
Dr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Newman?
Here.
Mr. Pencilla? Mr. Chavetti?
Here.
Mr. Leder.
Present. Please join us in a simple reflection.
By diligence to comply of the United States of America, it is a republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, endless, and infinite in all space.
Mr. Akins and Mr. Brodsky. I am considering moving the board matter and the carf matter and switching, so Mr. Brodsky would go first. Does that create a problem for either one of you?
No, well.
Okay. So then, with that being said, we're going to call the carf matter, please.
Thank you. Thanks, sir, anybody, or do I? You may use. Thank you.
Were we, sorry, if it's somebody else's, they'd have to give you permission. Brodsky. Can I swear all your witnesses in, anybody that will testify, might testify?
Yeah.
Have something to say?
Yeah.
Just step forward, please. Raise your right hand, solemnly swear. Testimony, you want to give truth to all truth under the truth? You answer that question, yes?
Yes.
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 Okay. Then my general direction to you is before you start testifying, state your name, spell your last name for purpose of the record, so that if we have to have a record made, we'll know who was speaking at that point. Okay. Mr. Brodsky, if I may, with regard to this application, can we mark the land use development checklist, list of variances, and statement of legal basis, together with the zoning board of adjustment applications, A1. A2 will be the architectural site plans, floor plans, elevations, prepared by your architect, I think it's revised to November 11th, 2024.
Correct.
And guess? A3 will be the location survey, prepared by Trinidad, dated June 3rd, 2024, unrevised. Your lips, A3. A4 will be the zoning permit denial, prepared by an officer, dated July 17th, 2024. Color photographs of the subject property, except we have seven images. We also have the remark of ZB1, the CME engineering report, Mr. Rizzo's signature of September 30th, 2024. Also, the ZB2, the engineer report with the signature of Rizzo, November 11th, 2024. Those are all the exhibits I have so far, and any other exhibits that any of you wants to mark at this point in time?
Uh, no, I don't have any. Mr. Covert?
Okay.
Mr. Covert, I have three letters. Did you get all three?
I may have, but I may not have updated my markings, but what is the date of your other CME?
Number one is September 30th, 2024.
Got that one?
Remember, here's the conclusion, number two is November 11th, 2024, and I think I should have a third layer of the same date after a very.
Oh, okay, that may be why, we'll mark that.
So two and three are both the same date?
We'll mark that, ZB3,
And then may I run through the checklist waivers?
Yeah, but I was just asking, hold on a second, I was remiss in not mentioning our business. If anyone came to see or hear or speak on the Gill matter at 125 Harvard Road, that matter has been withdrawn. The board has taken no further action with regard to that application. Now you mentioned it.
Thanks, so there's two checklist waivers being requested. The first one is elevations of the structure, so two elevations are proposed, are shown. They are to, what you're here to be the subject side of the project, the elevations at the front and the other side are not provided, but photos are provided. And the second one is location and type of attic access. I'll ask that through testimony tonight. We discussed what the attic access is, I was previously told it was a cooldown ladder, so if we just get that on the record, it's part of the fine, so if we get to that point, you can just identify the location.
What, what elevations do we not have?
The front and one side, because you can't see the addition from the front. You can only see the addition from two sides of the building.
Okay, there. We need, we need. All right, so let's go subject to the board making a decision with regard to whether or not those waivers are appropriate on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant Nancy Carr. The application before you this evening pertains to the property that's located at 100 Harvard Road in the R10, in the R10 zone. The application seeks approval to construct a a 61 square foot addition in the rear of the property in a location that is, currently is, is, there exists a rear deck.
Yes.
In that location where the store, the, the one-story addition is proposed. The purpose, as you'll hear from Mr. Condors as we go through, sort of squaring it off, hole in the donut, however you want to call it, is kind of, is really being driven by internal renovations that are being done to the home. And it's to facilitate, you know, a more useful, usable, modern kitchen. As you'll see when Mr. Condors walks you through the current layout, we're not really sure how the kitchen ended up the way it did. But, you know, to do it right, we require this little 61 square foot enclosure, so to speak, or addition. The, the reason we are here, there are a number of existing nonconformities with respect to this, this property. The applicant purchased the property about 16 years ago, has never done anything to the home, other than some interior renovations. But since that time, there have been changes in the zoning ordinance here in, in Fairhaven in terms of how floor area is calculated, right, with respect to basement. It's what we think has happened here. But, which, but that kind of tells the story, I think, as to why the numbers for the floor area seem to be larger than, you know, significantly larger than what's currently permitted in the zone. And that's by virtue of primarily, right, the calculation of the additional footage that is now counted with respect to the basement and also attic calculations, right, area under the attic. Uh, first floor. First floor attic. So that's, that's kind of just a little backdrop, and so we're here because we are increasing the coverage that's already exceeds that, which is what permitted by the 61 square feet.
Okay, so Mr. Condors, how long's that house been there?
I believe it was since like 2007 or 2008.
Did you design the house originally?
I did not.
Where did all the measurements come that are on your plan?
We had some, some PDFs that were given to us that we, that we.
Okay, so you, you effectively have done a full as-built and you have signed these plans and you have actually certified as to the measurements with regard to these construction?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and are there, Mr. Brodsky, any variances that were granted for the original construction of the home?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, and so can, Mr. Condors, can you help us understand where, you're asking for 61 square foot addition, right? That's all we're coming in for today?
Yes.
And yet, the total square footage, if approved, would be what?
37.63. 55.20.
55.20?
Yes.
Okay, so let's remove the basement from that, what would the first and the second floor calculations be?
Uh, well, if you remove the basement and remove the 96 square feet of that little narrow area that we have to count now over a first floor, if there's an attic over a first floor, exclusive of a garage, you have to count anything above 30 inches, so there's 96 square feet came from that, and then there's 667 square feet from the basement, so it's a total, so without those two numbers, the floor area would be 37.57.
Okay, which is also well inaccessible, what the requirement is, so where did that 500 square feet come from?
Uh, I believe it came, and again, I did not take the plans, but I believe when this was calculated, whoever the architect was, did not count the two-story areas in the house.
Vaulted ceiling.
The vaulted ceilings, yes. And I don't know if that predated when the, when, I don't know when that started to count, I actually tried to get an answer from.
Way before, did you, that, Jay?
Way.
I, I think so too, but I just, I wasn't sure of the other one, so I'm not sure how that happened.
Do we have a first floor elevation number on this? I'm just trying to figure out what the basement, look.
First floor, four?
No. We need a lower basement, so.
It, yeah, I, I measured it on site, and it's, I, it's definitely more than 30 inches, I took, I took the concern.
On site, yeah.
Okay, so, so the basement's understandable, cellar, whatever it is, get it, that's changed, got it, with regard to the space above the, I'm not sure where these spaces are, but understand that changes, the vaulted ceilings never changed. But you're measuring the house now at 3,700 square feet, plus or minus, and now we're talking about 61 square feet.
Correct. So if you would, Tony, if you could just walk the board through the, the house as it exists today, from floor plan and effective, and then proposed as part of this addition. Yeah, so if you look at sheet B2, we'll see on the top of the page here, first floor plan, the back of the house is the kitchen. And I have showing dash lines, the existing kitchen, and I also show the existing wall of the exterior in the back here, so you see it's kind of a very odd shaped right here, that would be very difficult to expand the kitchen at all. So you can see there's a tiny island, that's, that's what the dash lines are showing. So squaring off this back area allows us to put a long island, a longer island, that's more in keeping with today's standards, and of course, more counter space and more entertaining space overall for, for the whole. And then, Tony, with regard to any other changes, there was more planned that have any effect on this, right? Okay. And with regard to the attic, we, we talked about, Jordan had asked about the access, and yeah. Oh, yes, there's a pull-out stair up the hallway, I think, right over here. Okay. And, and then with regard, the variance that we're seeking now, Tony, is with respect to an increase, there's no increase in lot coverage, right? Because this, this, this addition is going basically where the already a rear deck. That's correct, it's the counter in the public. Yes. So, but we do have an increase, we do have an increase in the floor area. Yes. Going from, what is it, .485, the range you're over, .496, getting this to be non, which square feet? Yes, .496. Okay, and then, and then the total floor area you had said earlier? Uh, 5,520. And then what do you back, but then we calculated backing out. Backing out brings us to, if we take out the two newer ordinance changes, 37.57. Okay, and you have an elevation in your plan, right? It's just on the board. Yeah. It just gives them the ability to add it to where this addition is going. Right, so this is the rear elevation of the house, and the, the area that we're squaring off is right here. So you, you can't see it from the front of the house, and then this is the side view of that, which you can only see from the right side of the house. Questions from Mr. Condors?
Does anyone know why the, the height is exceeded at 32 feet?
I don't know, I didn't, the house was already there. We did not measure the height, I took these off of the plans that we were given, so.
And what was data on those plans? The original plans that you built off of, you said the house went in in 2007, is that right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact date. Yeah, 2007, I think it was sold in 2008.
2009.
2009, it sat for a year or so. And it was new, it was purchased as new construction by, by the applicant in 2009. And she, she never did anything.
So the, the height changed, and it, it may well have changed very soon after this house was built, it had been 35, and it went down to 32, I don't know when it was, but it was around this time. And if you didn't have 37.50 or whatever you've got, I don't think it would be standing out to me, but it certainly, it certainly presents like we've got problems that are invented, but I wish I knew the actual dates of that.
Yes.
Mr. Condors, how much is the attic space making up of that 37 something, do you have a number on it?
The, the one-story, the attic's only 90, 96 square feet?
I'm just trying to figure out how it got to 3,700.
I don't know. There's a half-story attic, or it's a pull-down ladder, so we're not counting any real attic space in the square footage, this is on the second floor. I guess you want to call it an attic to the first floor, it's really a second floor, floor area. There's, uh, areas where the roof, the roof between the first floor and the second floor is greater than 30 inches. Yeah, this, this area right here, which is above the kitchen, actually counts now, you have to count anything above 30 inches that's in that attic.
But, but does that explain away the whole 500 square foot difference?
No, it does not.
Funny for a month thing.
I think it's the, it's the, it's the vaulted ceilings that were originally in the house that probably weren't counted.
They were counted 2006.
Yeah, well, I don't know, maybe the other person.
The ordinance required that they be counted.
Yeah, I understand.
But it would be an explanation of where the 500 square feet comes from, and does the, do those measurements line up?
I don't have that number.
You, you have the original plans with you?
No.
What did it show as the square footage of the house at that time?
Didn't.
It didn't show 37.50?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, it did not show it to you. Uh, no, it did not. It did not.
On Zillow, it shows 31.50.
Mr. Condors, was the, was the pool present at the time that the house was purchased by the carf?
Uh, no.
How'd you get the pool so close to the property line?
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't put the pool.
What's the step back from, Skip, I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
Is it not in compliance? Jordan, do you know the answer?
Yeah, there's existing conditions for that. Side yard set back at eight feet, rear yard set back at 10 feet. The rear yard's about three feet of patio.
Can we not hear this? 3204, the tax record.
So it's a 10-foot step batch, and it, it reaches that by seven feet? And when did the pool go in?
Pool was put in by the applicant, Nancy. Well, Nancy, when did, when did you put the pool in?
I don't remember, it's, sorry, Nancy Carr, Katelyn, or it is in Peter, right? I don't remember, it was probably 2011, 2012, but we got permits for it.
Did you get permits for the pool at the same time as you got permits for the surrounding patio and area around the pool?
I believe so, yeah.
We don't have any of that paperwork here, I assume.
I don't.
Okay. Look, look, the issue's obvious, right? So it's an incremental change to the house, it's presented in isolation, is very straightforward. The design of the house clearly in 2007, eight, nine, whatever it was, was based on current standards. It's got an odd kitchen. The argument with regard to the expansion is one you're prepared to make, the problem is we're stumbling over very basic issues with regard to the property's compliance, if the property were currently compliant. And I don't think that there's any penalty for the fact that the ordinance has changed, but that alone doesn't explain the problem. And, and I, I think what would be good to know is that, yes, counting those vaulted ceilings explains the 500 square feet. Obviously, the area where it's above the 30 inches, that's different, the basement counting, that's new, got it. But with regard to not knowing exactly why, because the other things that were happening is people were finishing spaces that they weren't telling us that they were finishing. People have done things without permits, and with regard to the pool, to the extent that you got a permit, and they gave you the permit in error, that's not your fault. But without having that information, it's just presenting another question, which relates to what we're doing, so it, it's difficult to not have that information.
Okay. Yes, I'm sure you've got those records.
What happened with this matter? You were on in November, we didn't touch, we didn't touch any testimony, it just carried, no one knows. And, and did we carry it, or did the applicant carry it?
Yeah. Yeah.
You, you carried it, Mr. Brodsky?
Yes, yes, we did, I don't remember the reason, but it was us.
All right, so you're here in February, not because of us?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I want to understand.
Yes.
So do we have those files around? Like now? So, you know, one of the things that happens with pools, and I'm not saying this has occurred here, but that pools are approved for the pool, and then the decking is put in afterwards without permits, not saying you did that, but if, if the permit says it was a 10 feet and the actual pool is a 3, then it would be worth the board understanding.
Understood.
But if we can find that out now, Lish. Well, the other possibility is.
For a cellar, only for generators and fence, only for the base seat unit, so. Or an additional variation. That's the denial for this one. Do you pull, but? That's what I see, cellar, generator, fence, anything.
I, I go so far as to say, if you have a permit, you build the pool exactly where it is, this board will fix it.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we can, we can, we can explain it, we can put it in a resolution, so you don't have to worry about it.
No.
Okay. Amazing, you have all that stuff right there.
Grading, my hand.
Looking for a time.
August 2010.
You can make yourself comfortable and have a seat.
Oh, thank you.
We're not that strict. We want your architect to be standing.
You know, it means that they had never spelled my name before, if you want me to spell my name.
I got it, there. You see a pool permit, but no plans?
I don't see a permit. Like, if you look here, you'll see design permits listed down here, I do see grading for a pool. But I don't see a zoning permit.
All right. Well.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Condors. Why don't you complete your testimony with regard to the proposal, and then we'll try and figure out.
And it could be in paper files in those archives, it just might not be.
Are those accessible to you right now? Thank you. All right, Mr. Condors.
Yes, I have nothing further to explain the floor plans.
Can you, can you show us the existing decking and how that interrelate with the proposed addition? Does it, is it lining up exactly with?
Yes, the existing deck is flush with the rear of the house, and we are sitting right on top of it. If you, if you look at the site plan on page V1, you can see the hatched area there is right on top of the deck.
Are you putting in a foundation underneath it?
Yes.
With no foundation now?
Uh, there's probably a deck foundation which would not be adequate for the house, so we'd have to put an actual foundation wall. So we'd have to cut away some of the deck and either patch it, repair it, or.
So there's plaster's in place or something with gravel or something underneath it, is that what we're saying?
Probably, yeah, probably posts on, on, on either piers or sonnets.
You're saying probably, don't you have the as-built conditions right there?
It does, it doesn't show the deck fa, the deck foundation.
But didn't you survey it, I mean, haven't you looked at it, touched it?
Well, I make, it's fair to assume that a deck does not have a full foundation, so I know when we dig, when we get into the construction plans, we will have to address the foundation of the, of the, of the.
All right. Would you confirm, would you confirm that the, that the the kitchen addition is not going further than the existing deck?
Yes, yes, I'll confirm it.
Sorry, the, the location generator on your site plan there, it seems like it's in line with the side of building, almost, the exterior side of the generator is almost in line with the side of building.
It appears that we had the 13.1 feet.
The survey, it looks like the generators outside of that line. I was wondering what the setback was with generator.
Are you saying that?
I'm saying, I'm looking at the survey. The generator appears to be entirely to the right of that bump out there, so.
Um, you're comparing this survey to the.
I'm comparing your site plan to the actual survey.
Oh.
And when I look at the survey, it looks like the generator is.
The answer is 10.
It's 10 feet?
Yeah, the requirement is, is eight.
All right, thank you.
I didn't understand the question.
The, for some reason, the generator is showing floats with a bump in the survey.
Yeah, that's kind of strange, because this is, you picked this right up with CAD file, you know, there.
Maybe I'm a little scared.
So we have Rob Adler's plans here, these are the original plans, these plans show the total square footage of the house is 31.45. Are these the plans that you reviewed?
Yes. Now, they're, they're paper plans, so we don't have electronic copies of them, so we do our best to.
You scan them and put them in CAD, and you adopt the numbers and certify them?
Yes.
Are they accurate?
What do you mean by?
What do I mean by accurate? Are they real? I mean, Mr. Condors, you obviously have not done a full as-built of the house, and that's okay for efficiency, but we're looking at numbers that are all out of whack, and I'm asking you whether or not we can rely on your numbers under your signature, and if what you're telling me is that sometimes they're not exactly right, which is what we seem to be intimating, I won't understand it. There.
From, from my analysis of those plans, I determined with whatever computer I have and abilities that I have, that those, that the square footage is exceeding, appears to be exceeding, or is, actually, the, the maximum.
Yeah, no, I understand that much, I understand that much. So as I'm looking at this foundation plan, there is a block wall that runs on the rear of the house, and that deck. and that deck all appears to be up on plaster's. So you are proposing then to effectively sever this small section of the house, you would create what, slab under it?
Uh, foot, footings and a, and a, and a block wall. Are you talking about under the addition?
Yes.
Yeah, there'd be a footing and, uh, probably a little crawl space and block wall. No, not, not a slab, I mean, there'd be a rat slab inside of the crawl space, but not.
Oh, are you gonna be expanding the basement by the same sixty one?
No, no.
Okay. I'm, I'm particularly interested in knowing whether or not the house is constructed in accordance with the plans. And I'm not exactly sure that under this intense pressure of a board meeting, and I can figure that out as I'm looking at it, I would like to just know the answer. Do you know the answer?
I, we did not measure the actual house.
Have you been inside the house?
Yes.
Okay. Um, are there any areas above the garage that are finished?
No. Oh, there's rooms above the garage, yeah.
That's-
Yeah, there are rooms, there are rooms behind the garage, yes. But again, there's this attic that you have to count, it's for the new ordinance, which is the remainder of the roof of the garage that's contributing to that extra square footage.
Yes, and that's not on you, that's not on you. I, 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 I would have liked, I'm sure everybody would have liked, had you created a plan showing us with color where the spaces are now being counted that were not counted before, so that we could just dispose of the issue. And what I think I'm getting caught up in, I don't know what everybody else is thinking, is do we have a situation where there was additional square footage added beyond what was approved? Or do we have a house that was fully compliant? And are we simply adding sixty one square feet? And if we knew that, we'd probably be done already.
Yeah, well, the only answer to that would be for me to actually physically go to the house and, and do a, do a measurement, which I could.
Well, I'm not asking you to send the applicants money, I'm asking you to take the plans that you have adopted in your own and make sure that we know that those plans, as shown, are consistent with this and that we have reconciled the thirty one forty five with the thirty seven whatever, and that we know that all of that square footage is part of the change in the ordinance and nothing further. That's, that's all I'm asking. I think, I think what it seems like to me is if you net out the changes from the ordinance over the years, there's still a delta.
Of course.
And that's, that's what we're all trying to do.
I understood, and my, my suspicion was that some things weren't counted, then they should have been.
What are, what are you showing for your second floor square footage? So I'm picking some over here, there's, there's-
Existing? Yeah, two thousand twenty nine.
Okay.
But again, I'm counting all the, um, including the vaulted ceiling area, but-
I know, I'm trying to help you.
Yeah.
Because these plans say that the second story is fifteen or not.
Right.
Right?
Just though that would, yes.
So the vaulted ceilings that he apparently didn't count, that apparently got through zoning, explains five hundred square feet right there, right?
Correct.
And then you got about a hundred somewhere else, a hundred on the, uh, the area above the garage, it's over thirty inches, that's the hundred.
Yeah, above the garage, and there's two areas actually, and you can see, it is highlighted, I mean, it's not in color, but it's highlighted on the plan here.
Yeah, it's ninety six square feet.
Yeah, right there.
Six hundred, that's the difference.
There's one here and there's one over here.
And that number was three short of whatever that round number is, right? So that gets you within one square foot tolerance, right?
Close.
Yeah, it's very close. Yo, Mr. Adler really knows what he's doing and likes to press it exactly to the limit, and I'm wondering whether or not he was fully in compliance and whether or not the new measurement's wrong. How, how tall are the vaulted spaces?
Um, they, well, if, this one here has a, has an angle to it, the one over the family room, and the one, the other one was a full two-story floor.
Can you go from this? What, what do we count of vaulted, it's all, gotta be over fifteen?
It's gotta be capable of having two stories, including the rafters inside of it, and I think the number's like seventeen feet. It's, it's a pretty big number, and Adler knows it really well.
Yeah.
And he would press right up to it. And so my guess is that you are probably in compliance and that in, in your caution, which, which we appreciate, um, that you might have incorporated it and maybe it doesn't need to be incorporated. Under the Adler theory of if you can't sandwich two eight-foot foot stories along with the, with the floor joists of eighteen inches, whatever that is, twelve inches.
Right.
Um, that, that's what he did, he pulled it right down below that.
Okay, but isn't it thirty inches now for the new ordinance?
Thirty inches for what?
You're talking about different things.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, that's the vaulted, it's all about the vaulters.
You're talking about whether you count the vaulted ceiling or not?
Look, so, so I'd like to know the answer with regard to the pool, because I'd like to be able to help you clean it up, because I assume it's done right, and I assume that you would like it to be cleaned up.
Yeah.
The other problem we've got is if we proceed based on what you've given us, you're gonna show Zillow is gonna read thirty seven fifty and you're gonna pay taxes on thirty seven fifty, whether you're thirty seven fifty or not. Um, it might be a mistake to proceed based on the number you have, if in fact just suspicious.
Okay.
Um, but that, that, that it's fully compliant as it sits, subject to the changes in the ordinance.
Understood.
We did not change that vaulted ceiling, we didn't touch that.
No.
That, that was what it was, it, it is what it is, no change. Um, the thirty inches we clearly changed.
Okay, alright, so why don't, we'll get that in from, we'll get it.
If, if, do you wanna talk to your client? Because, you know, you've been at this for a little while, I, 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 I'm reasonably comfortable, I don't know if the other board members are as well, but I'm reasonably comfortable on seeing these plans that I know how you got to where you are. But I, I, I do believe it's possible that you've got more square footage in here than you should have, but I leave that to you.
To talk about lockout original?
Yeah, sure, we want to know. Lock coverage, first floor sixteen thirty six, garage six eighty three, covered porch three ninety four, driveway walkways ten twenty, deck two ninety, it'd be nice to be totaled it, but I don't see that. You wanna take a look at this, George? Is there, so I assume when the pool went in, because there was a permit fold, that lock coverage is calculated and it conforms. Do you see it conforming today?
Um, I'm showing, obviously no change to lock coverage, but-
But that, that it really isn't the question, the question is whether it ought to fit in conformance today or not. You show it not being conformance?
Shows it's not.
How far out is it?
Required is forty five percent and then calculated forty eight point five.
So what's the square footage? How many square feet are over?
They're shy of four hundred, three ninety four.
Yeah, it doesn't really.
I don't think the pool was there when it was done.
Well, that's, that's true.
No, they were not done.
So it could-
No, no, that's your starting.
No, the question is, right, this was the starting point and it did not comply with the starting point, yet the pool permit was issued.
Well, we know what the starting point was with regard to the original permit. We understand that there was a pool permit fold that we don't have, um, that was, um, authorized by the zoning officer without variance, and so that suggests that what was shown was in compliance. And so the addition of those two things should put us in compliance today unless something else happened, and I don't know what else might happen. But, but once again, it's not, we're not pointing fingers, if, if, if there, we should fix it.
Right.
If, if, if there were mistakes made, and it's not the applicant's fault, then we should fix it, and if there's mistakes that were made that, that, that are on the applicant, then we should consider it.
Meaning if we can verify that we have a lot, lot coverage exceed, then apply for the vary.
Yeah, well, we can fix it for you, if, if it was done by accident and, and the applicant isn't at fault and there was a permit issued, we're not gonna put that on the applicant, we'll fix it in the resolution.
Understood. Yeah, I mean, these plans certainly don't include any, obviously, pool or, or any, uh, like patio area.
Oh, pool came later. Just, what about the deck? Was the deck original?
Yeah, two hundred and ninety square feet for a deck is on it.
I thought it was three ninety three.
Covered porch is three ninety four. Where's the-
So the deck was sufficient.
There's no patio, we got a walkway.
No, that's actually what I thought.
She did.
Yeah, I did show. I, we add the pool and, and stuff.
And stuff.
Is that what's there now?
But the deck was, the deck was there.
There now.
Correct.
The deck on the house is what was there?
Yeah.
Correct.
But with regard to the pool, did you apply for the pool and the decking around the pool and everything that's there today all at one time?
The pool and the stone around the pool.
And is that what's there now?
Correct.
Okay.
It looks like the patio is, is greater on the current plan than, than this pool plan.
Is, is there a retaining wall behind the pool?
Oh, that was the pool plan?
Well, it, it, there's a, yes, a wall between the pool and the
Yeah.
On the property line, you compare that to, yeah.
You take a look at the, oh, yeah. Here's your, that is law company, so you know.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Did you put that in when you put the pool in?
Yes.
That seems to line up.
And you have the, the grading plan, yes, but this is in there scaled. For the pool?
Yes, they've been lifting that tall.
Yeah, it's, it's up there now, but it shows the pool and it shows a small patio around it.
It was a show that they put in a wall behind it?
So this isn't showing-
Then it wouldn't have to be like engineered or-
That, that walkway, the pad was there. Um, that patio seems to track all of that, you know, and all of that seems to line up generally. There's nothing else back here. The deck lines. Uh, I, uh, Mr. Brodsky, do you have, what, what, what do you want to do? Did, did you want us to consider the proposal as it says?
I, I, I think that we should go forward and consider the proposal as it exists and, um, you know, now, understanding that the, the, the footage, the square footage that's shown is going to be, um, somewhat off, right? In terms of Zillow and taxes, taxi.
Well, we don't, we don't put any, greetings in Zillow, but we do have Adler's plans, so we know that that thirty one forty five, whatever that was, seems to come from those plans, and it usually does.
Yeah.
It's also thirty two oh four on the tax record. Which is another common thing, because this is-
A tax record.
Yeah, but wrong, more often than likely.
Yeah, sure, but it's new construction or it wasn't point in time.
Alright, alright, so let me suggest this, let's finish, okay? You get us to where you're ready for us to deliberate and they'll decide whether or not they want these answers before they proceed, or if it's important to them to know that everything's square.
That's fair.
Okay?
That's fair.
Okay.
So Tony, if you-
Will just the original file back, so we have all of that.
And, and thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board for pulling the back. So Tony, with respect to the, the vary-
Hold them all together, and I'll give those back to-
That's being sought, um, with respect to the sixty one square foot addition. Um, you know, we, you, you talked about, you talked about some of the benefits in terms of the utilization of the home, do you see any negative impact?
I, I, I don't.
Visible as well.
I do not, it's, it's in the back of the house, it's, it's a one, it's one story, it's not really adding any extend, it's not, it's not extending the footprint of the house from a coordinator standpoint anyway, so.
And you're comfortable with respect to the accuracy of your plan, thanks to this going during, during the, uh, during the period?
Yes, I am, other than the definition of what a vaulted ceiling is, I, which I might not be clear on, because I can make it all up.
But to you, that seems to be a, uh, uh, you know, a plausible explanation for the differential that we keep on the-
That, that is, yes.
Tony, I, I wanna understand how the original kitchen was laying out. Um, because this was a top of the market home when it was built, this house traded at one three, one four in oh seven. Um, and so the kitchen wasn't substandard at that time, at least it wasn't viewed that way. What is it about this sixty one, I, I mean, I understand it's bigger, so it's easier, but how does it not work as it is?
Well, again, if you look at the shape of the, of this, if you eliminate the addition that we did, if you can kind of look through that and look at the dashed lines that we have here, you can see it's a, the shape of this whole area is like these two overlapping.
Because the back left corner setup is a breakfast note, and the kitchen is actually the square in front of it. And it, it's, it's a approximately anyone want to scale?
And by?
That's a little more than ten, it's like fourteen by fourteen.
The kitchen extends all the way back to where the stairs are, is that still the way it's configured? And then it goes all the way to the back wall, all the way to the right wall, and then all the way to the to the study.
But it said the change, right?
I'm not translating.
One second.
Yeah, I wanna know what that, what that square is.
Fourteen by fourteen. The island on the plans is three and a half feet by three feet, which, if two plus or whatever, three million dollar home, you would never see that, as far as I can, as far as I can.
Two hundred and sixteen.
Even fourteen by fourteen is a little little short for a question.
Well, it's not really fourteen by fourteen, because you gotta walk through it at an angle in order to get to that back breakfast note, so
Right.
you have to, you have to use it the way it was intended in order for it to really feel like fourteen by fourteen.
Right, which limits the size of the eye. Right?
Yes, it does, it does. Alright.
And just, Mr. Chair, Anthony, just come up one second. Just, just to, to confirm, since you've owned the house, you've never added any, any, you've never added to the height of the building, the column, you haven't added to the footprint of the home, you haven't the only things you've done externally are, is the pool, right?
Correct.
Everything else, um, is as it was when you purchased.
Other than interior renovations?
Other than interior renovations.
And, well, there's not a generator too, right? You put that in?
Correct, I haven't got the permit for that as well.
Yeah, yeah, because she, she listed that.
Yeah.
So the, the, uh, pool application, or whatever this is, shows a pool and concrete coverage of five hundred and eighty square feet. The plans before us today show pool and patio coverage of twelve hundred and then square feet. And, and this is just a pool with like a two-foot wide piece of concrete around it and what's there now.
But, but, but look at the first sheet, the, the first sheet shows the it, it shows the, the lines, the way it is now with the angle.
I think it's just, uh-
Now, what's that last sheet you're seeing?
That hasn't, that hasn't proposed dimensions on it.
That's a face.
In the, in the, this one here, I think he's talking about, yes, look, that's like, look, this.
Yeah, I agree.
That's just a grading difference, it's not a patio.
Yeah.
That's the thing.
Yes, it-
This is a grading change, not a, not a patio.
But if those, if you put the next page, right, that gives you your dimensions with regard to your lower left-hand corners.
Yeah.
As you write it to the record.
Pool and contract, pool and concrete, five hundred and eighty square feet. There's no patio.
I agree with Mr. Shvedi.
Around, just a thin margin around it.
Show me the first sheet again.
That line around it in the shape that became the patio is where they've entered, you entered the box, because it's in the patio, this is-
It's in the sheet.
It's a great, yeah, next one. That, that dotted line there is great change, it's not as, not, it's not-
And that's what it would have had.
Yeah, so you, so the patio is twice as large as what was, what was the current addition.
Yeah, there wasn't really a patio, just, just that border around the pool.
It's been dramatically increased, that's the difference.
Okay, Mr. Brodsky, I'd like you to look at this.
Yep.
So this is, uh, this appears to be from the original file, this appears to be the review and the approval with regard to the pool.
Okay.
And Gervetti says that the square footage permitted with regard to the additional lock coverage is-
Well, what was evaluated, we don't know, what was-
Well, right, so, so, so this appears to show that the pool is approved as a rectangle and that there was grading that was done and stairs down from the deck in the direction of the pool. And your current survey shows that all the area that was changed and graded is now all patio and it's flash, and it does not, it does not show on this permit that all of that was to be impervious, and it is six hundred square feet, plus or minus? Do, can, when you wanna look and say, just compare the second sheet. Second sheet, because it wasn't filled, the second sheet gives you your proposed dimensions of concrete and patio, concrete and food. But you now have the as-built indicating a, basically a larger area development.
So retaining walls on two sides and- So retaining walls on two sides and the patio on two sides, a lot three, four and fives.
Yeah.
They had to close the permit, yeah, if they closed the permit, they were going to observe what was done relative to the original plan.
Those plans, they're going.
But the applicant has testified on Rose that she installed the pool and the patio at the same time pursuant to the permit, correct?
Correct.
They've got a, a coverage percentage calculated on that five hundred and eighty square feet in, in that.
Is that the, is that the delta between conformance and non-comformance, that six hundred and four feet?
And the lockovers?
Well, yeah, thank you, it's three-nine-four.
Yeah, it's three-nine-four, but, um. I don't know if it matters, because we don't know what the requirement was for sure then, and.
Lock coverage doesn't change.
Yeah, we, you, how much, how much, as to what's built there now is what we saw.
That's, so what? Well, it's also, it's also. We're over by three ninety-four.
What was the lock coverage when the original house was built? Do we figure that out?
Uh, I didn't do it totally.
It is conformed.
Um, and, and, and the fact that they pulled the permit meant that they, they had access room and, and they got the permit.
Right.
The question is whether or not they built what they submitted.
So even if they went around to forty-five percent, they're at forty-eight and a half now, which was the three ninety-four. That's where in the town, that's the question.
Well, the plan, the plans are also clearly different from what's existing today.
Right.
Irrespective of the coverage issue.
Right.
I, I think the board needs to view this as a brand new variance, and we're, we're still career, for me.
Very special. We're improving, we're, we're. It's not, it's just the conditioning.
Correct.
Well.
It's not just the.
But we're not going to treat it as.
The new variants, well, going back to what I said, Mr. Brodsky. If there was a mistake made at the firm, and the applicant, um, submitted for permits and got them, then we can fix it. But that is not evident based on what we're looking at. And so, I, I, I think it, it, it clearly seems to be out of line, I don't know why it's out of line. But one could, one could surmise that it was built in excess of what the permit was intended to put. But again, you. I understand the issues of the house, because the ordinance has changed, and, and I, I get that, and, and how you presented that to us tonight, that's a matter of personal taste, so I, I don't fault you for that. But I think when I hit this, I might have been like, well, why are we open? Because the house is too new, um, and, and I guess that, I, I, I don't, I, again, I don't know how the board feels.
That could be, that could be the answer, right? If, if, if I over calculated, maybe I over calculated, because I didn't, yeah, it was you.
Well, no, you calculated what was there.
I ca, right, exactly, I can, I use the pledge. Oh, coverage, oh, coverage.
Is it, is, are we properly understanding what's patio right now? Does it, does it sit thirty feet away from the pool and meander like that and go all the way to the bottom of the stairs? Or is that a grading one?
Yeah.
Yeah, now that's the outline of the patio, what you see there. Yeah, there's, there's photos submitted, so.
Yes, we show it. It admittedly differs from what I was just showing. Still.
All right, ha- have we?
Yeah.
Have, have we gotten your testimony?
Yes.
All right, let, let us, let us.
Yeah, so then I can respond.
Yeah.
Now we can proceed.
Right. All right, so the, the, the question for the board is whether or not, based on what you've been presented with, you have enough information to make a decision on the variance one way or another. Or whether the, um, the things that have been raised with regard to the numbers that they. Say, and the permits that we've seen cause you to wonder and want to have further information about how we got to where we are. Because it's material and it relates to your, um. Your, your thoughts about proceeding with the proposed variance, I, I think that's the question.
Well, separate out. The applicant came in to request this evening, and what we found and what concerns, I think you've got the second here. Of what concerns you. The applicant is.
When we are.
Yeah, but the applicant came in this evening and said, look, I've got to get, I'd like to have a sixty-one square foot addition. Over an area that's already developed, if you will, I'm not, I'm not increasing the rear yard setbacks or those types of things, I'm simply putting something on an area that was decking. And now you have, you have found that the numbers don't necessarily jive, they're. Thinking probably at the point where you understand why some of the interior numbers. Were not presented at the time of the original construction. And now you're counting in areas of a half-story. Or, sorry, attic space over, over a small area.
Yes.
Together, together with the elevations inside with the vaulted ceilings. And that may account for a portion of it, but that doesn't account for all the portion of the, I guess, lock coverage and potentially impervious coverage.
That, that seems to explain the situation with regard to the square footage, but it doesn't address the lock coverage, there's still not an answer as to why the lock coverage doesn't line up.
Yes.
Nor is there actually the full permit, is that correct?
Well, I, I, you, you, I. I wouldn't want to say there is, there is clearly language in which. The borough is aware, and they reference that a permit is going to be, for the pool is going to be pulled. There is a permit for grading, there is a permit, references those things, we don't see the physical permit in these documents.
No, but there are, there are.
But there is a reference to the, all of the permits that would be needed to construct what is existing today, as to.
Is also existing, and lock coverage that was not built to that.
And that's, but that's not clear from the documents that you have, it may be clear if you have an opportunity to investigate.
Here's the problem I'm having, and then I'm going to let you guys talk, because I want to know what you think. Um, I don't see a correlation between the problem with the pool and the decking and the proposal. It troubles me, but I don't see a correlation, because there's no additional lock coverage being proposed. And so I'm having trouble reconciling my problem with the patio, um, and the, the modest nature of the proposal to expand the house by six feet. So.
What is everybody? It, it creates a minor problem when you produce your resolution, when I list what's existing conditions. What is new variance relief? You've heard the chair's comments with regard to what we can fix and what we can't fix. But if you, if you actually technically do need new variants. For coverage or a lot coverage, you probably should address that, and you should have some idea what that is. It, it may just be an investigation and you've already got it.
Mm-hmm.
I, I.
Well, we're in no position to, to, to run with that.
Yeah, you can't speculate.
Because we, we don't know what happened.
Right.
Right, but I don't see, to this, to Doug's point, what. How would the regulation read, because the.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say in certain things, existing conditions, and right now, I can't tell you whether or not that's, that was an existing condition that was.
Right.
Usually when you're talking about an existing conditions, it's because it was approved.
Yeah.
Or grandfather, because of the, the, this construction, we know it's not grandfather, it was either approved. Or something wasn't built properly, or it was built properly, and we already know about, I just don't know what that answer is.
I, I, the resolution can't speak to it, I mean, the resolution has to actually say that we were unable to determine that the existing, um, improvements are all built in accordance with permits. Um, but that it, it's, it's a problem independent of the request.
Can maybe do that, right?
We, uh, you, you can put that in, what it's going to do is it's going to create a problem for the property owner or the homeowner down the line. And, and again, that's, that's not this board's concern, but there's going to be some representation, and, and Mr. Brodsky knows this and can explain this better to his client. When they say, you know, I'm getting ready to sell this property, everything, all the improvements conform or have been provided for. You can't, you're not going to be able to do that off of this resolution.
Can you bifurcate it? Haven't we done that before?
We, we require them to come back on and have, ask for another areas for lock coverage.
Yeah.
Sure, but that's, that, like Mr. Kovac said, it's going to exist until.
I mean, that way.
Yeah, you could. You know, and, and, and sometimes you do that, sometimes you say to the applicant, let's make, let's take this example. Off the table, make it easier. Applicant comes in and says, on a commercial development, I don't know what my signage is going to be, because I don't know what my clients are going to be. And we say, in the resolution, no relief has been granted for variances for signage, you know, if it's not conforming, they're going to have to come back. And you, you know. That simply creates.
But this is a borough enforcement issue, and, and whether or not the, the applicant in selling the house is willing to make a representation, which I wouldn't have the seller. That everything's in conformance or not is an independent issue, it doesn't have anything to do with us, the, the proposal is for the sixty-one square feet.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just, it's just important that any resolution of approval clearly read to not grant some backdoor approval to block.
There's, there's going to be an independent paragraph that says this, this is initiative discovered unresolved.
And if the applicant wants to come at a later, at a later time and say, I only want a variance for lock, which exists, obviously that's a made of deep, deep origin, and that's probably the best way to go forward.
Or reduce the size.
Or reduce the size of lock, which is coming to, to, to conformance. Not necessarily for the patio, you want to take space somewhere else.
Right.
That's where I struggle with it, is the, the, the sixty-one square feet is de minimis, especially because you're not, you know, creating new, new, new lock coverage. But if we can memorialize the resolution, as you said, then, then, then it's the way to go, and I'm. I want to say no offense to Mr. Condors, Doug Adler's plans are, I think he hasn't measured correctly as far as the, the second floors, because.
Rob.
Uh, Rob, I'm sorry, I think it would have, would have triggered it back, even back in oh-six.
I.
Um, just because that number was scary, the one. It can't be that much, because we were.
I was surprised too, when I saw it, I like.
Yeah, because we were measuring vaulted ceilings back in oh-one, when I came to this board, so.
No, so what square footage are we actually considering?
Well, that's a, that's a better question, did we take it off the original plan?
Terminal four.
Yeah.
That, that gives me pause that we've considered. Again, the sixty-one square feet is not, not the issue, I think it's very reasonable and sensible addition, but we're talking about approving five thousand five hundred and twenty square feet.
Well, we're going to have to.
We're not going to address it, you don't have the information for you, the applicant can't provide that information to you, as I said, the way you address it.
And to be honest with you, that, that, that basement calculation is definitely.
You're just going to say in the resolution, Doug, we're approving sixty-one square foot addition, and leave it at that.
This issue was raised, unresolved, we have nothing, we, we, I can't.
No, 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 it has to have a square footage number on it, it has to be sixty-one equals something. And right now, what we have is Mr. Condors's plans that were taken off of Rob Adler's plans, and the number's thirty-seven something. That's the number.
When we exclude the basement.
Yeah, yeah, the, the basement, we, we've treated the basement different already, right? Because that, it is fifty-five hundred square feet now, it just is what it is, because of the way we treat the basement, but we're not, we're not penalizing the applicant, because we know that it was already there.
Do we make a note of that? We've done this in the past, I believe recently, where we made note that the basement is in, we did that for.
Well, look, the, the reason it has to be separately identified in the resolution is because if we get somebody that wants to go down the street and say there's fifty-five hundred square feet there, fifty-five hundred square feet there. Has to be clearly identified as a seller basement issue, and, and then no harm, no foul, but the square footage is what the square footage is. And so I do think there's a question as to whether or not it's thirty-one, forty-five to start, or thirty-seven to start, and we got that there, a thousand or something. But if we're going forward tonight, it's based on Mr. Condors's thought.
Not the applicant's problem, but with the new ordinance, the seller's basement, fifty-five twenty, it's not the same as fifty-five twenty in other houses.
Right, which, that's why it has to call that in the resolution, I don't know how to, yeah.
And until we quote fix, unfix that, we're going to have to pull that out every time we do a resolution, and it says, nope. As per new, you know, measurement of the basement, it's this.
And I think Doug, I've done that.
Yeah, we've done.
Yeah, we've done.
In other.
Yeah, yeah, because we, you know, we, we've got a new set of ordinance, as we transition, and, and again. That's not, that's not difficult to, to highlight, as to why. Because that, that, that's going to be something that I'm going to put into the, the positive and negative criteria and balancing as to why you are or aren't entitled to relief. That's, I, I think that has to be articulated.
But we're also possibly adding five hundred odd square feet for the vaulted ceiling, it's ninety-nine.
That'd be great. Yeah, we recently had, we recently had that with that smaller older development where we identified, here's the reason why they need this relief. It's not because they're.
Right.
Building something new, I think you may recall that.
Right, it's, it's kind of crazy, that sixty-one square feet goes from.
Yeah.
Well, it would say that due to the changes in the ordinance that the, the house, uh, currently measures at, um. Based on the changes in the law.
It's going to be an interesting resolution.
Skip, what's your, what's your point?
I, I don't have a problem with the, uh, with, with the kitchen addition. Taken, taken as an isolated addition. But what I do have a problem with is a compliance issue on the pool. And, uh, I would really like to know, I'd like more information on the total lock coverage, which I want to see daily.
So you feel as though the, uh, the lack of information with regard to that, all is your ability to make a decision with regard to expanding the house by six feet?
I, I want to know what the lock coverage is.
Okay.
And I want to know exactly what the lock coverage is, and want everything measured as it existed.
We have that as, as it exists today.
We have these.
So my different scenarios are, the board granting variance for the current measured and previous coverage. They can, at a letter point, provide a permit showing that they actually got approval for their current.
What, what number do you have? You have, you have the, you have the rectangular pool, or do you have the?
No, the survey, the survey shows a larger.
Yeah, it shows forty-eight.
The plan that was circulating was twenty-two thousand, uh, ten or thousand more, when the grading plan came in.
Yeah.
But the plans tonight show that the current version.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so they're showing.
And it's at forty-eight and, and change.
They're showing forty-eight and change over, over the forty-five, which is the limit, they just don't have an explanation of how they got there either. That, that's really what the issue is.
So you're either granting a variance for it, or it actually is permitted, we just don't have that proof right now.
Well, no, we're not going to grant a variance for it.
No, that's, that's, that, that's an option.
Well, it, I suppose it's an option, not one in favor. How, how can we give a variance for it, you know, if, if we, if, if bad? Here's, here's the issue, Skip. The issue is that the sixty-one square foot addition is separate and apart from that problem. That problem is or isn't a problem, we don't really know if it's a problem, but it's an enforcement issue regardless. And so since we're not being asked to do anything that's increasing lock coverage. Then it is, it is not directly connected to the decision about the sixty-one square feet. You don't have to be comfortable proceeding or voting in favor, and you can encourage us to ask the applicant to go get the information and come back. That's really, that's really the issue, right? Is whether or not we want to make a decision on the sixty-one square feet and leave all the rest of it to decide and not feed it in. Or whether or not we want to say not enough people, not four out of seven, are comfortable proceeding without, you know, all here. That's.
But then, but then Todd, what exactly are we coming back with? What is the information we're coming back?
To, to see if it's permitted. Or, or they can, which I don't necessarily recommend, but they can agree to remove.
Going to see if you can find, we were given, we were given permits to build a pool and either concrete area.
As it existed.
X, Y, Z, which resulted in the following impervious or, or lock coverage. And what exists today.
Yeah.
Is X, Y, Z, and it either is or isn't what was.
Well, well, to present the question straight out, so let's say that there's no permit for this six hundred square feet, and that's what they find out and they come back.
Mm-hmm.
Does that, or does that not give us a basis to not agree to the sixty-one square foot addition to that?
No. I don't, I don't, I see, I, I. I see them as separate, but other board members may say, look, this is, this is creeping along.
Okay. Okay, so just overbuild, too much density, connecting it that way. All right. Look, we, we've done, we've done a number on all this, I, I, I personally feel like the sixty-one square foot addition is not unreasonable in light of all of it. The house is big, the lock coverage is a lot, and it all of that is true. But I don't think that it is specifically presented to us tonight, makes it difficult, um, but I think, I, I think we can stay in our lane.
If, if we approve the sixty-one square feet and ask Mr. Condors to clarify the vaulted ceiling issue, and then give that member to Doug. Put in the resolution and add the sixty-one square foot to that, so at least we get the vaulted ceiling. Well, we've also seen ceiling in a half-story, what that, what that answers.
Right, well, I, I guess what I would say is that the, the applicant hired an architect, came in with plans, they took the information, they've given it to you, it's built. And so, actually, when you look at it, you didn't, you didn't look at the plan, but the second story built above the garage, it's all shown on the plans. There, there is no, there's no evidence based on what I'm looking at here, that they finished a five hundred square foot area above the garage.
Understood.
Right, and so i- it's conservative if nothing else, it may be, it may be back by five hundred square feet, but.
But again, putting extra square footage into a, a renovation, that's, and notwithstanding the, the seller's basement and everything else. It's something else another applicant down the road can point to, that, oh, over here in the street, you approved.
Well, here's why I'm not bothered by that, because. Mr. Condors's assessment is that it wasn't counted, it is counted now, and so it's five hundred square, five hundred square feet more. The resolution should amplify that, and it, nobody's going to convince me that the neighbor should have thirty-seven hundred square feet, because this one is. Um, but I understand your point in terms of the lack of accuracy, I'm working. Uh, but I understand your point in terms of the lack of accuracy. I'm more concerned about our taxes and, you know, flag that some bit ago.
I was just trying to figure out a way to get that, you know, right or wrong into the resolution, the vault and ceiling, but the.
That, that I think you can take care of relatively straight forward.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with that.
The basement.
And, and there's testimony, there's testimony under, under.
I'll pull out the basement seller thing anyway.
Yeah, that's what that is, so.
And the big question like Todd says is, does the sixty-one, does the lot coverage matter for the sixty-one square feet? I, I feel on it, no, because it's covered already. It's lot coverage, lot coverage.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Brodsky, um, your client's doing a lot of renovations in the home?
Internal, yeah.
So they're gonna be in the back digging, putting in a new foundation, right, Mr. Condors?
Correct.
Would the applicant be willing to install a drywall?
A drywall?
Yes.
It's a, it's an underground retention system for water for uh, like your gutters or whatever.
So at the end of the day, guys, right?
Requires soil testing and want to make sure everyone's standard for drywall. Yeah, easily as a per test.
So if the applicant came in and wanted forty-eight and it wasn't filled yet and she was at forty-five, one of the things that we've considered to mitigate that problem would be to install a drywall. If the applicant was willing to install a drywall and we can talk about what's practical given the gutters and all the rest, that could perhaps um soften the concern with regard to lot coverage.
How do you memorialize it going forward? So a future application, if this comes up, says, oh, the lot coverage is.
I would still be neutral with regard to lot coverage, make no statement. Actually, I would, I would demand that they show us what the lot coverage was. Before the food is there and what the lot coverage was happened, because we've spent about a month not being able to figure it out. Okay. Now, I, I just wanted to see if, if that was something the applicant would consider. I, I suppose the applicant could also propose to remove some of the patio.
Yeah.
You, you would do that?
Yeah. Or um, there, I mean, or if that's not aesthetically feasible or doable. I don't know if this, I'm pretty mad, I just don't know the rules. I do have a wraparound porch in the front of my house. There's a porch for that, but I'm happy to rip out.
No, and, and for the board.
I, I, uh, there are other ways to potentially free up. To, to, to reduce the lot coverage that I'm happy to explore.
I mean, three hundred and ninety-three square feet, it's, it's a good amount, but it, it's possible to reduce it. So there's a way we could maybe make a condition that they either as a condition, provide proof that the pool was permitted at the current square uh, lot coverage or remove it to be a compliant condition.
Look, I, I, this is too much. I, I, I don't think personally, um, I, I don't have any strong feeling about how this happened. I have a strong feeling about sixty-one feet that you're proposing and the situation that you're in as you sit here. We do drywells all the time. I would be comfortable doing a drywall. I wanna understand, Jordan, what's doable without going crazy. But getting some of that water underground would make me feel better. The idea of ripping out these improvements as they sit, I don't know, they've been there fifteen years. That just seems, that she seems very wasteful. Um, this condition was not flagged by anybody else in enforcement and I just it, it, it's, it's unfortunate that we're being presented with it, but I'd rather, I'd rather find a workaround.
I think the storm drain issue is more than that.
Jordan, give me a number on the drywall. Do we know, so, so, so the issues I have with drywells, all the, all the leaders need to run into a spot and then you're gonna get them into, into the ground. I, I guess maybe what it would be, would be they show a design of, of what they can do in, in some way without spending too much. I don't want them to reroute their gutters, but I assume they can probably grab the back of the house.
I agree.
And then dump it.
Yep.
And, and I, you're already in the ground, you've got all the machinery there and, and you're already, if you weren't disturbing the ground, I, I, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even wanna put this on the table, but you're there. Right?
Right, but I would, I always ask for soil testing ahead of time, so they don't have to dig the pit before they get to construction early.
They got a pool, so they, they shouldn't have a groundwater. I don't think they have too many groundwater problems.
Steven Hines also uh infiltration rates.
Well, something's better than nothing. We're not, th- this is a proffer by the applicant to offset what it is, so we're gonna take the best we can get. It's not a matter of it not working. It's just gonna be the best we can do under the circumstance.
Your decision.
Disagree? You think it's a bad one?
I, I mean, it's, it's state requirements or state um recommendations to always do testing.
Oh, I, I don't, wh- whatever you think by way of testing, because I don't wanna create something that doesn't work. But I guess my point is that if the testing says that, you know, it can only be so deep, it can only do so much, then that's the best we can do. I guess that's the problem.
And we have no problem doing the testing.
And anybody wanna stop me before I make a resolution or propose a resolution? Anyone on that side? No, Frank?
No.
Okay. I, I'm gonna propose to approve the, our application. Um, I, I don't have the, the tax, it's the, it's for the addition of the sixty-one square feet. It would be based on the truth and accuracy of the record, except that we lack your record. Um, it would be conditioned on um, two things. Uh, Mr. Condor is providing um, a fresh analysis of the existing structure. I encourage you to look at Mr. Adler's plans. I may be giving him too much credit. All right, he may have an eighteen feet here, he's supposed to be seventeen, it doesn't count. If it doesn't count, please don't tell us it, it does. Um, but we're, we're looking for your certification, signature, stamp, we know where you live.
Yeah.
Um, as to the square footage of the house. And then the second thing would be on submission of a proposal for a drywall system um, to be installed in the rear yard. Um, which uh, provides the, the most feasible way of getting um, water underground from the roof leaders. Uh, wherever there's, there's a place to grab it. Um, and I, I just don't know, Jordan, it's just gonna have to be reasonable. And um, we will um, evaluate it to make sure that uh, we're gonna offset the lot coverage problem. Anything else? Okay, I got a first and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just wanna, I mean, we've kind of discussed this, but let's just make sure the resolution really states that the basement is X square feet.
We'll talk. The resolution will include a statement that the total square footage of the house, regardless of what Anthony comes up with, includes what was formerly a basement and is now a cellar, a cellar and then a basement, and it will uh clearly identify that inside of the resolution so nobody misunderstands that this is a six thousand square foot house. Um, and it will also explain um, that whatever you come up with, it's gonna be larger than thirty-one, forty-five, and it's gonna explain that change in the ordinances caused the recapitation of the numbers. Um, and that it, that is the reason uh, that the original plans showed thirty-one, forty-five and the new plans show whatever Anthony comes up with. Like that reduced to a writing. Either, either in an email between you. All right, we just need a roll call, please, Sean.
Uh, Mr. Natchetnik?
Yes.
D'Angelo, yes. Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Forte?
Yes.
Dr. Lohner?
No.
Ms. Newman, yes. Mr. Leader?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Red.
I'm sorry, that was so hard.
Thank you.
All right, next application, we have a board matter. No, no, we'll see you, Marty.
Thank you.
Paul, my application's been fine. Trash on the planet. That is a problem, I have. One of the reasons they're not doing this. He's gonna go up six for one, which is really about twenty-five, no matter what happens. We need to look at, we need to look at it. Thanks, Marty, you well. Take care, buddy. All small. Okay. Already doing testify, step forward, please. Welcome, raise your right hand. So I'm sure the testimony before the board will be the truth, the whole group talking about the truth.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, same instruction I gave before, if you were here, before you start testifying, state your name, spell your last name for purposes of record. Welcome. Mr. Atkins, and we mark the application as A-one.
A-one?
A-one, and we mark the zoning permit denial as A-two. We mark the architectural submissions. Like they're revised to June seventh, twenty twenty-four. You have that date, eight, mark those as A-three.
A-three.
Some nine, some nine sheets. A-four will be the images. It's like there are two images existing street view and proposed street view with some hand, together with a hand drawing. It is a hand drawing. A-five, topographic survey dated October fifteenth. Uh, looks like twenty fourteen. A-six is the area map. A-seven is the Fairhaven uh historic preservation commission memorandum of action. It's like it is March second, twenty fifteen. Um, A-eight is the zoning board resolution, number fifteen dash zero nine. Mine had a missing page, looks like. Like, appeared to be a missing page. If you have a complete one, that would be good. ZB-one will be the April tenth, twenty twenty-four CME review for the signature of Jordan Rizzo. ZB-two will be the August twenty twenty-four uh CME review of the signature of Jordan Rizzo. Think those are all the ones that I have. And I don't know if there are any initial waivers that. Oh, I'm sorry, do you have any other exhibits that you wanna mark?
We'll mark them as we go and I think the uh, I think we have a more current one than in two thousand fifteen. We have a historic preservation resolution that um confirms a memorandum of act, of action on a meeting taken uh twelve twenty-one, twenty-three.
Historic preservation?
Yes.
We will mark that as A-nine?
Although curiously enough, at the end of this memo, it's dated November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, but literally the meeting was held on the twenty-first of December. Twenty twenty-three.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll mark others, so you're up here, your next exhibit will be A-ten.
A-ten, mercy.
Okay.
Terrific.
And, do we have any waiverations?
The four checklist waivers, um, I don't take any exception to these. It's Monmouth County Planning Board, three-year-old SCV, Monmouth County Health Department, so those three applications and then a copy of any easements, covenants and these. The typical and I don't take exception.
Thank you, George.
Ready, Chairman?
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mark Atkins on behalf of the applicant Beth Ford. Uh, by way of uh, brief history and introduction, ladies and gentlemen, this is circa nineteen seventies split level style home with attached garage. This property previously received Fairhaven zoning board approval for an FAR variance at point two-six in two thousand fifteen. However, the applicant did not act, the applicant, the owner then and the owner now did not act on that approval in two thousand fifteen. The FAR currently is not conforming at the property at point two zero eight, uh, where point one eight is the maximum. The two thousand fifteen resolution noted the following significant points. Um, A, this is a unique site and a confluence of three zones here in the borough, the R-twenty, the R-ten-A and the R-thirty. The property would otherwise comply with R-ten-A requirements. B, the board found in two thousand fifteen that this house is, quote, "a complete outlier in the neighborhood," close quote. And this is especially so considering it is regulated by the HPC. C, the board further found in two thousand fifteen that the requested bulk variances could be granted, given these facts, along with the fact that there is an active boatyard to the east, true in two thousand fifteen, true in two thousand twenty-five. Since the two, indeed, since the two thousand fifteen approval, the borough has acquired the private residence to the north and intends to develop it for public recreational purposes. That's my comment, not the two thousand fifteen resolution. Uh, the current application proposes to increase the FAR slightly from the point two-six that was approved in two thousand fifteen to point two-seven-seven, right? So seventeen one hundreds. And to add a home office for Ms. Ford, who owns her own business and operates her own business uh, from home and has done so since the COVID times. Um, and her business is fully home-based at this time. The borough's HPC, as I said before, has given approval to this, uh, not only previously, but to what's before you this evening uh, with regard to the architectural plans um, prepared by Mr. Siegel. Um, a number of existing non-conformities exist at this site, uh, not surprisingly, and they're largely due to lot size and lot configuration. First and foremost, we have an undersized lot of less than fifteen thousand square feet, where twenty thousand square feet is required in this zone. Secondly, we've got lot depth that attended less than one forty-three uh, feet, where a hundred and fifty feet is required in the R-twenty zone. The rear yard setback is presently twenty-nine point seventeen feet, where thirty-two is required. We're gonna propose to slightly increase that by about a foot and a half to twenty-seven point seven feet on the setback. Side yard setback is eight point eight-six feet, where fourteen feet is required. The combined side yard setback is twenty-eight point eight-two feet, where thirty-five feet is required. Twenty-six point seven-six feet is proposed. So again, we're shortening that up just about a foot and a half. A lot coverage and building coverage figures comply, okay? So uh, to my right is the property owner, Beth Ford. She's been sworn. Uh, Ms. Ford, I'm wondering if you can tell the board a little bit about what brings you here from two thousand, your journey from two thousand fifteen to now ten years later, two thousand twenty-five. Good evening.
Hi, thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, Board, I just wanna thank you for your service and appreciate your commitment to our town, making sure it's good standing in our neighborhood. Um, I'm very um, passionate about obviously this project, so I've made some notes just to make sure I didn't miss anything that I wanted to share with all of you. Um, I am Beth Ford, F-O-R-D, formerly Good Goods, which is, which shows up on my previous plans as I changed my name by twenty-three Fairhaven Road. Um, as I testified back in two thousand fifteen in front of the zoning board, some of you have another faces. Uh, I purchased my home in two thousand fourteen after relocating my three children and myself and little Silver to uh, obviously this lovely town of Fairhaven. It was the best decision. We love Fairhaven. We are truly in love with our neighborhood and the community and historic district on Fairhaven Road. That being said, in two thousand fifteen, I was thrilled when the zoning board unanimously voted to approve all the requests made to the plans to update our house back then. However, and sadly, due to circumstances out of my control, I did not follow through with the project. Most concerning at that point was the abandoned property adjacent to me, which sits on the Addison River. I felt very uneasy justifying the financial commitment of renovating with so much uncertainty on what was going to happen with that property. Fast forward almost a decade. Life has surely changed. As um, my attorney Mark had just stated, I started an advertising agency five years ago. All the employees, including myself, all work out of our homes, fully remote company. Um, also, within the past number of years, I joined families where Peter Gach, also from Fairhaven. In July twenty twenty-three, we were married on the Fairhaven dock and celebrated with our friends and family under a beautiful tent in my front yard at twenty-three Fairhaven Road. And now we have a blended family of seven. Finally, last year, the borough of Fairhaven purchased the abandoned property that was causing me so much grief in my north with a resolution of converting it into a public park. With all of that being said, we are excited to be here before you would present these plans tonight in hopes of an approval, not just for the future and foundations of our families and future generations, for grandparents celebrations, God willing, in this home. But also to finally bring the dated and not very attractive structure up to par on our lovely Fairhaven Road. Per the Historic Preservation Commission memorandum of action recently submitted in this current matter, both commission was unanimous that the proposed renovations would not further detract from the overall streetscape of Fairhaven Road. Instead, the flow and design of what is proposed is more aesthetically pleasing and serves to balance out the overall structure. And I thank my architect, John Siegel, for such a great design. Thank you.
Other question, Mr. Atkins, have a question. Um, and I do recall the two thousand fifteen application. But I don't recall all the variances that were granted. We did the FAR, which was point two-six, obviously, sort of, but were there any setback? Um, variances granted in the two thousand fifteen?
Let's take a look, see. So I'm looking at the resolution. For ZB fifteen oh nine, does that sound right?
Page five, annual report.
So page five is FAR, area depth, rear yard and side.
So the rear and side.
They were granted in two thousand fifteen.
Okay.
What was the original application? I also was on the board and I remember the application, but I don't remember whether the original plan or former plan was to tear it down and start over again.
No.
Or renovation?
It was a renovation, a renovation. It looked somewhat similar to. It looked somewhat similar to, to this final elevation that we're seeing the drawing.
Right, and the architect will distinguish, Chairman, the, uh, differences between two thousand fifteen and today.
So, so, um, what? I, I understand a lot's changed over ten years, but, um, if the house is similar, the numbers are similar, maybe they're a little larger. Well, why not just come back and ask us, it's expired stale, but why not just ask us to approve the original again?
It's just the lifestyle, what's happened. We have different needs now. We're a family of seven. I run my company out of my home, my own office, and um, which actually we are not going as high with the house, which the architect can explain. Um, he tried to keep in with the style of the house a little bit more and not do such extensive work on them. I don't know, the things that pop out on the, the cantilevers.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we could have the, the architect, you know, identify the particular changes and then?
Yeah, I think that's good. I'm interested in understanding the delta between where we were and what we approved and what we're posting on it.
Terrific. Uh, thank you. Um, any further questions of Ms. Ford?
Nope.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board members. Thank you, Ms. Ford. Applicant now calls Brian Siegel, registered architect in the state of New Jersey, who's been sworn. Um, may I qualify him, counsel?
Was Mr. Siegel the designer of the original?
Yes.
Can you qualify an expert at that time?
Yes.
Lost any of your licenses?
All, all good, Stephen.
Good. I think we can stipulate that through production.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Siegel. Can you already have the board to, um, afford residents and talk about the existing conditions, and then we'll talk a little bit about what's proposed with your plans. Thank you. Well, as we've discussed already, we have a and we need like, sorry, could you just show them back on the, uh, location plan? Just Fairhaven Road and where the water is and the boatyard and all that good stuff.
Fairhaven's the road?
Yeah.
Fairhaven Road here to the west of the house, which is sits kind of corner of the property. Then it's down here at the, at the water's edge, the property that, uh, this floor we're talking about going north is this piece right here, and the boatyard is all across the back here. So you have, she is this unique piece of property surrounded by these, these two of the lots.
You've got the road, we've got the
Road.
The, the Fairhaven acquired property and the boatyard, and to the south, there's a residence.
Correct.
Do we, do we have a topo? Where, where is the hill and where does it start?
The hill starts in the upper northern corner of the property in an elevation of roughly eighty nine feet. And comes up to where the main house sits currently today, and it's basically a hundred. So it comes up almost to eleven feet.
So you are part of that drop off, and, and what is the elevation down at the, um, at, at the park level of where the, where the house is in front on the river?
It's gotta be below eighty nine because our topos don't go beyond that, but well, it drops off incredibly.
It's twenty or thirty feet, right?
Twenty thirty.
Yeah, okay.
They, they're not in the, uh, female zone for, you know, flood.
They're in the X zone. They're in the X zone.
Well, as discussed before, this is a renovation to an existing home. We got, the people in our families have actually simply lived in it, it's all. I've kind of come to appreciate the design. Uh, it is a bi-level by modern standards. When people say split level, I say bi-level only because you walk in at a main level and you either go down half a flight of stairs or go up half a flight of stairs. The second floor is cantilever over a portion of the existing home. And this existing floor plan, which is the, we'll call it the lower level floor, but the house is relatively, is proposed to be relatively unchanged in this design. So we are renovating and looking to remodel the existing home in its context, but keeping the same elements of the house as it exists now. So downstairs, there are three bedrooms. There are two bathrooms. There's a half bath at the entry level. There's a lower level family room, but there's an existing two car garage. On the upper level of the house.
Existing, existing, right, Mr. Siegel?
Yeah. You have basically a partially open living room, a dining room, and a kitchen, and a master bedroom with a bathroom and a half bathroom adjacent to that. That make up the core of the second, this upper level. There is nothing over the existing entry foyer or existing garages that exist now. There is an angular deck here that we're going to talk about rebuilding as well. On the first floor or the lower level, spaces that I described before stay the same. There is a proposed increase in adding an expanded bedroom back here to make this one bedroom slightly bigger. It's an addition of roughly six feet by thirteen feet. We are talking about rebuilding the deck area with a patio below it. It's more of a rectangle feature that comes straight off the back of the house. The hot tub and the deck area that are existing would stay the same. And everything with regard to the front entryway and the second, then the, uh, two car garage stayed the same on the first floor. Lower level. On the upper level, basically what's happened is the kitchen has been remodeled and expanded by consuming parts of the master bedroom suite to do that. And the proposed master bedroom suite has been proposed over existing one car garage. So that's where the bulk of this variance is, and we'll come back to that in some, some drawings to look at that. As you heard earlier, Beth works from home remotely, so we have proposed a small office, say, six foot by thirteen foot dimension on top of that bedroom expansion down below. And then you have a, an upper level deck. I have called it a roof deck because it is imperious, so it is count, have in the building coverage calculations that we are looking at tonight. When you look at the exterior of the home, and I stack these elevations over, and I know they're two dimensional, so we have to look at the perspectives as well. But the original bi-level home has double paneling around the front, remains the same. We are proposing to remove the roof and reframe the roof using stronger conventional lumber members. The original house is framed basically in too much portresses that I wouldn't want to put up to a hurricane standard.
Really?
Yeah, they're pretty.
Wow.
It's a pretty unique house.
Mid-century modern?
Yeah. We've proposed basically just rebuilding that roof line at nine feet versus an eight foot ceiling and then reframing that roof at roughly about a six, six on twelve, seven on twelve pitch. And I dotted on the drawings, you can see it where the line of the existing roof is and where the line of the existing garage roof is right here. Because that's where, again, where bulk, where the bulk of the issue is. When you look at the front of this house, I'll use maybe the same, maybe, that we already have. It's shown to the historic preservation.
And this is the existing conditions?
The existing condition. I mean, the house itself and the landscape, really, everything you see in the front yard remains the same. What we've done here is we've talked about rebuilding a good chunk of this roof line here to create something that has a little different massing and balances out the house, honestly, given the money.
You're showing what's proposed.
This is the proposed remedy. Uh, it was submitted to the historic preservation commission. It was a black and white drawing. I colorized it just so that you could see it better. But we're also talking about maintaining the same colors of the houses that exist now. Learn to love.
Mr. Atkins, want to mark that A ten?
We've, we've learned to love ocean blue and actually kind of sedate, you know, it's not a white house, doesn't jump out at you.
So that was one of the historic comments.
It has black windows in it. They definitely changed out some of the windows already. We intend to keep the same detail involved in that. And, and just manipulate the massing here on the front.
What was the comment, Jordan? That one of the historic comments, or maybe the only comment, is that you're going to maintain the same colors and materials?
Yes.
And you, you'll agree to that, right?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel, if I were to call corrected from twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, we had discussion about that tree in the front yard. Is that open or remain empty?
Absolutely. No, no, I'm taking that down.
Can you, what, the floor plans again?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Frank.
And what is the exterior material? Is that wood?
Yes. It's, uh, T one eleven.
T one eleven.
Yeah.
Vertical side.
You're going to use that again?
Mid-century modern.
Yeah, mid-century modern.
Love.
Well, so the, so the deck that's shown on the existing, uh, front elevation.
Yes. Here.
You're, you're calling it a roof deck, but what's happening, you have a two level deck, but the one deck is beneath the existing deck.
I'm calling it a leaf deck only because most decked situations, water drains through.
You're going to fire a glass?
We're gonna, we're gonna put a membrane underneath it to catch the water, so the area below stays dry. It counts in building coverage equation, it's reflected.
Imperious, but, but, but between what's there now and what's going to be there later, the proposal is effectively to have a second level underneath it, not a second level above it.
Yeah, well, you are actually
Aesthetically, it's not going to change from what's there. No, it's just imperious instead of draining.
So we've got, we've got another exhibit.
So A eleven. Could you describe that for the board?
So A eleven is basically if you were standing on the, uh, western edge of the property, looking back at the house, it's where this deck that we're talking about exists or would, would exist, and it basically shows the fact that it is an upper level deck with an imperious membrane roof underneath it, so there's a patio space down below.
Mr. Atkins, is there a lot of coverage variance here?
There is not a lot of coverage.
So, so this is all conforming.
It's a correction. Yes, a lot of building coverage comply.
And, and so, but, but that view shows we're, we're sitting way down on the hill, right? That, that shows flat. It's not like that.
It is flat. It is, it is flat on Beth's property, and then it starts to pale off.
On the, um, the site plan, the architectural plans?
Yeah.
See the contours? You can clearly see where the He's going to get you to the contours, Mr. Chairman.
So the, the area that you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, is this area underneath the roof deck?
Mm-hmm.
That was in this, in this picture. Ninety nine is right here. And basically runs like this. So in a hundred is basically where the patio is. So this area in here, which is the foreground drawing here is relatively flat. That's, that is right up to Beth's property. Then after her property, I think it's, is it still pretty ratty and weedy? I think it is.
Basically, the edge of where this rendering is, is right before it drops, so that's the last.
It is, it is certainly.
That's a fair, fair comment, yes.
Roughly, yeah, whatever.
So, so for purposes of record, if I'm looking at your deck from the from the upper corner of the new patio, you've got a dimension of twenty one point five, twenty one and a half, twenty one point five. And
Yeah.
Starts midway through there at ninety, ninety nine, ninety eight, ninety seven, ninety six to the property line, so.
In all variants.
Can you approximate the distance that's flat from that corner? It's about halfway through, about ten feet?
Yeah, ten feet.
Yep.
Yeah, ten, eleven feet, I would think.
Mr. Atkins, what, what are the variances triggered by the application? You've got a floor ratio varian.
You've got a floor ratio that exceeds the point two six that was granted in two thousand fifteen, uh, by seventeen one thousand, so from point two six to point two seven seven.
What's the square footage delta on that?
Square footage delta on a
How many additional square?
Fifteen thousand square foot lot is hundred and sixty five, is that a hundred and sixty five square feet? That'd be point eleven or point, point seven. But that's point eleven, right?
Yeah.
Point eleven. Does that sound right?
Yes.
So about a hundred and sixty more square feet on mine.
About a hundred and sixty more square feet. I'm just, you know, lawyer math, Chairman.
It is, it is pretty easy for me to explain where that is.
Okay.
It is simply the expanded bedroom downstairs. The existing bedroom, which was only like ten by thirteen, we're proposing to make it basically thirteen by sixteen, so that additional square footage down here, which is roughly seventy eight square feet.
It's what's
The six by thirteen area.
Correct, right.
There's also Beth's office above, which is facing the boatyard.
So that by two is where the
That's more or less where the difference is in the total square footage between this application and what was presented before.
That's also the rear yard setback, too.
I was going to say, what's the, the rear yard, that, that, that triggers the
Yeah. It does trigger, what was? Does trigger rear.
Well, previously, uh,
Slightly, by about a foot and a half.
Okay.
But, but not to that same location, so
No.
The different corner was, was twenty nine point one seven.
Correct.
Now this new location, which is close to it, is twenty seven point seven.
Twenty seven, and what about the combined, your, the, uh, the one side that's triggered now? What was the, I'm sorry, I'm in front of the, what was the old of the two thousand fifteen resolution on that?
The one side is eight point eight six on the south side. That's existing. Revolution or existing?
No, the combined side is
Oh, the combined side was twenty eight and change, one second. Twenty eight point eight two, and we're proposing twenty six point seven six, so about a foot and, uh, foot and a half. Two feet.
All right, Mr. Atkins.
Yeah.
We won't interrupt you this time, so
That's okay.
Floor ratio is, is, is a variance.
Floor ratio.
Be there.
You, we do.
You're not over in square footage because you're in R twenty and you're under the cap.
Correct.
What else you got? Anything else?
Uh, just the combined side yard, the side yard, and the rear yard. That, that's it. Existing conditions are undersized lot and lot depth.
Okay.
And there's one more existing
For which variance is were granted in two thousand fifteen.
One more existing condition is the setback to the adjacent property structure. That's existing condition. That's to the one, uh, one story garage, the south side. And their second floor addition is inside of that, so it's not a new variance.
Uh, we, we purposely held that corner right here. That's one of the reasons we did not choose to build over the garage entirely. Also, just aesthetically, breaking it up and leaving that one section and actually splitting the roof here with the shed roof and some lower playbacks just lowers the bottom of the house completely.
What's the geography to the east? Is there, are there steep slopes to the?
It's the boatyard.
It is. Her, her property is almost a hundred percent flat. It goes, this entire backyard is a hundred feet. It's a hundred and one over here. The, her fence is on the property line, and then it's a cliff goes down.
It's almost an outcropping over the, the Addison. If you, if I don't be walking property or walk the side, walk Fairhaven Road, like it's an outcropping, and then it breaks to the, to the north and it breaks to the east.
Go ahead, sorry. You need the the single side yard, you have an eight point eight six. You're showing another one on the other side at seventeen and change, but doesn't the deck come within five feet of the property line on that side?
The deck is at four point seven.
Right. Isn't that deficient also? Isn't, is the combined deficient?
Combined is deficient.
Okay, but you're showing seventeen.
Well, the combined is, I understand. The side yard was the principal building.
No, it's just the setback.
Okay.
Can I read my version? Yes, real quick, um. Side yard setbacks on the north side, the existing is four point one feet, and that's to the deck.
That's right.
And that's, that's going to be the, the limit there. The I'm sorry, it's existing. The proposed is four point seven eight. That's the new deck, so that's, that's going to be a variance, four point seven one.
Yes.
On the south side, again, just one side yard. Um, existing is eight point eight six. And the one story eight point eight sixes are existing, and then the house, which is the second, second story proposed, is fifteen point seven nine, so that complies.
That complies, yeah. We're fourteen feet is required.
Yes, thank you.
Right.
Combined side yard setback. Four point nine six is existing, where thirty five feet is applied. And that same twelve point nine six is the, the smallest amount between both side yards, but taking in a post condition, it's three thirteen point six four feet. That would be a variance.
Um, our, our
So we're improving the one side with the deck, is that true?
I wouldn't say we're improving it, it's going to remain. That makes sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
A part of the challenge of this property has always been
Yeah, because it's skewed in a lot.
Yeah, the orientation of the house is skewed to the dimensions of the lot, which obviously can't be changed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in understanding what it's going to look like from the park. So I wonder if you could put that elevation back up, and if we can try and picture what that's going to be like. I want to understand what's there now and then what the, what the proposed renovation adds to that, and then I'm also interested in any water mitigation because I'm worried about those slopes.
So I do have pictures of what it looks like now, Chairman, so we've marked this, I think we're up to eight twelve. Counsel?
How many, how many images?
Uh, just one image of the rear of the property.
So that's effectively there. You're adding a, a, um, a, a roof line to get that vault in the direction of the water.
Correct.
But that's not there.
This, this is added to
Yes.
create now.
And, and then
Some interest that you will
And then the bump out to the east.
That's, that's, that's the extra
And, and the, so, so the rest of the house is already there, and, and the proposal for the deck is to rebuild it as it sits, or you're expanding it, making it larger?
I'm expanding it, making it larger and squaring it off. It's a trapped little shape right now. It's not very effective. Useful.
Hmm, so the picture you just circulated, uh, Mr. Atkins, this is taken from what direction?
This is from the edge of the cliff where the boatyard is.
From the northeast corner of the property.
And it looks
Looking in a south, in a south ex- excuse me, looking in a north.
Westwardly.
Northwestly.
Right, sorry.
So the, so the park is behind the house from here?
The park is over here.
Right.
Uh, to your point about concern with vision from the park to the deck, there is a lot of tree coverage, and that's all on the slope. I don't know how much of the park is going to like that being developed.
Okay.
And I doubt that everyone's going to want to knock down all those trees.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that there's a fair amount of coverage on the Yeah, buffer.
Yeah, well, that, that
Those are on this property or on the, on the
It's on the furrow property.
It's on the furrow property. It's like all, like a lot of jack.
Just another image?
So I'm going to mark, uh, pardon me, I'm going to mark a fourteen So I'm gonna mark, pardon me, I'm gonna mark a fourteen, which is a packet of photos. Showing the uh, Borough Park property to the north, eight, thirteen, I'm sorry, eighteen, thirteen.
Is there any screening landscaping plan for that side of the house? On, on the, on the, the, on the.
We really don't have that much room.
No, that's fine, I'll just.
So the view from the park doesn't, doesn't really significantly change with the addition that you're proposing.
No, no. In fact, the photos that we're circulating right now, that's husband Peter's. Effectively standing in this northern corner, right here where the patio was proposed. And he put them as a series of photos, one, two, three, four. And you can see the abandoned house and then you can see the abandoned house and then part of the water. And it continues to pan around to the boatyard. And that is, that is the view as you see it today from this corner, so.
Where, where's the property number here? Are the leaves effectively where the, where the applicant wants stopped?
Yes.
So the property end?
Yes.
So all of this scrub brush and stuff is um, part of the, either, either the borough's property or the um. Is it all borough property?
Probably.
Well, on the last page, you could see the fence, it's like, you know, not.
Chairman, it's fair to say all the leaves are brown, I think.
Oh, jeez.
Thank you, Mr. Scott Bass.
The sky's green.
I do, I do the.
There we go.
Any fence plant? Area between the new park and the house?
Uh, we did show on the survey that we were gonna put, you know, the four-foot privacy factor. It's just to define the property for the most part.
What, what if you moved the. Portion of the deck that has the uh, the hot tub in it. To the back of the house. Uh, move it, move it to the back of the house in a um. I guess in a southern direction. Would that? Would that get rid of some of the, the uh, the need for variance on the uh, on the northern side?
Clearly it would. It's an expensive something. It's been there since Beth bought the house. So, you know, it's something she wasn't planning on moving.
Again, that's an existing condition.
It's an existing condition. It's been there before she bought that.
Are you talking about moving it back like in that knock?
Yes.
Yeah.
I also think it's fair to say that the tub overlooks the river.
Right, yeah.
Aesthetically.
There's like a fence around it now. I guess enough coming down, right?
There is a fence around it now. This rendering is probably now a hundred percent accurate to whether or not that fence should stay. It's more of a privacy screen right now, so if you're in the hot tub, you cannot see it. I think as a condition of this application, if, you know, if it would please the board to keep that fence for privacy reasons, we'd leave it off.
So the original um, approved application included an addition above the single-story house in the same length.
Yes.
The deck proposal was what relative to this?
Very similar. The biggest change in this application from what was shown before that we see now is biologically, we've embraced the nineteen seventies bi-able house. Trying to maintain that image or that look. The prior application had much steeper roof lines, twelve-on-twelve roof pitches. It was almost two and a half stories high with a hoopla on top of it. You may recall, even had a, a, an attic level balcony gallery. It was almost a third story. Uh, and the whole structure was like white shingles, et cetera. It was quite the transformation, but at the same time. As you heard earlier, it was something that, you know, we kind of put. Pencil to paper and you look at where things were at that time in life, it just didn't make sense to go forward with it. This is, this is a similar application, but I would say a one that's.
Any other changes, the office.
Yeah, square footage of the office. Yeah, square footage of the office and it's, you know, it's a, it's a more subdued application.
I like the roof. Or just.
Yeah.
That, that gave a line over the, the um.
Thank you.
Over the, the deck, I like where that looks.
And the HPC did too.
What's the ridge height existing and what's the ridge height is proposed?
Um. Height is uh, twenty-three, existing twenty-six point nine four, proposed with thirty-five is the max, but well below the max.
We had another twenty-six point nine four proposed, twenty-three existing, correct? And that's driven by two factors. One, the decision to use a nine-foot three height when we proposed up every one story. Was slightly different roof pitch, it's about a six or seven on twelve pitch. Which brings it up a little bit higher. But we do not have any habitable attic spaces up above. One of the questions that was asked. Where there was, you know, acceptability. There are a couple of areas within the house here. Proposed vaulted ceilings, but the only attic accessible space that we're proposing for mechanical use, there's a pull-down stair here. In the laundry space that would give us access to mechanical system, what we would need to heat and cool the. This new upper level floor for routine service, yes.
Not that it's relevant. Is there a basement or is it?
This house, this house is. Slab on grate underneath this entire section right here in the front entryway. And then the area underneath the lower level first floor of the three-foot high vault.
Can you show me the sheet again, which has the deck area? And just kind of show us what is going to be the expanded part of the deck? Like, like show us what's existing and what's gonna be larger.
So. Yeah, there it is. So if you look at. If you look at the existing hot tub and deck space and this trap is on a uh, deck, we're effectively just doing this.
On sheet eight five.
Can I ask you a few questions, Mr. Albert?
Yes, sure.
Something I already told you. The survey submitted was from two thousand fourteen and you just represent that, the conditions on that survey, so.
I, I believe I'll say all of this.
Five, eight, three, Jake, if you wanna follow up.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Couple of these, I already, uh, the front trees, they're not moving. Is there any trees at all that have been moved?
There, well, in, in all fairness, there is a. Back here, we're proposing the two-story, there is an ornamental, I don't know. Yes, thank you. It's a, it is a.
You stay here for the record, please?
Uh, I'm here, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So the borough has a house for. Tree. So.
But the main one that's in the front yard that you're seeing. This is, this one's face for sure.
Mr. Akins, I'd ask about water mitigation. You probably had to interrupt six times before you had a chance to answer, but is there any proposed water mitigation systems in the part of the park?
I don't believe there is, but I don't, I also don't believe that we'd have any objection to it.
Is there a room to put one effectively and where would you put it? Especially with the gradients.
Although the rear yard is recently open.
It would either have to be someplace up there or it'd have to be someplace in the front yard. Biggest challenge with the front yard is you're close to the tree roots and.
I know an issue. I don't think that's an accurate, I don't think that's a worthy trade-off.
I'm not also, what about that top right portion of the uh, up, yeah? That, just drop off?
Uh, well, this is fairly level here and then, yes, everything up along this property line is a cliff down the border.
It's probably the only place you could go is up there.
We could certainly work with Mr. Rizzo or to, you know, selecting a location like the southeast corner of the existing property for that.
No, like you're just excavating and destroying whatever integrity that's still left there.
Yeah, so to the extent that we're.
It's more erosion, probably.
The extent that we're adding, um, and to the extent that we're trying to um, rehabilitate this house for a hundred years to come. It seems to me that the biggest issue is, is what happens underneath it. And I think it's really important that the gutters be designed in a way that we're getting that water into a safe place, so you don't have erosion and problems like that. Um, I, I would think that that would be very valuable.
I don't disagree with that, Mr. Chairman.
How do your, how do your, how do your roof pitch? Can you get all that water to the east?
You're gonna have to have some leaders that come down in the front where they do now and still pitch out onto the yard. I don't think they go.
Can you get them, can you get them moving south? And take them out, you know, to the property to the south and then hopefully out to Fairhaven Road so they don't go to the north?
Take away from the river?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get it from coming down the slope.
I understand. We, we could certainly submit a supplemental grading and drainage plan, Chairman, and work with Mr. Rizzo on that.
Yeah, I, I think it's a gutter design and that, you know, you can usually make a decision. You're going left or you're going right. I'm, I'm just talking about going away from the river.
There's probably a way to do it. It depends on the depth of the drywall here, because the grate is going from a hundred to a hundred and one to a hundred and two this way, so you're going uphill. So if you're gonna take water from someplace up on the front corner here and bring it around to a drywall, be this way or this way, you gotta be deep.
Yeah, I, I think your drywall probably would be located there. I think you're gonna have an easy run to get the east side of the house to go there. With regard to what doesn't go there, I'm just thinking to take it to the extent feasible, and I'm not talking about adding any cost. I'm just talking about intentionally designing it to take it to the south or the east to the maximum extent and to the drywall to the maximum extent.
Yeah, again, supplemental grading and drainage plan satisfactory to Mr. Rizzo. We're happy to stipulate to that. No issue.
Yeah, I'm on gutter design too, Jordan. I'm, I'm on gutter design.
Including gutters, leaders, that's fine.
So if this lot were the proper size, this house would be under the cap. And it would be under far and your problems would merely be the side yard setbacks.
The configurations, the classic bulk variance, C ones.
And those are um, viewed in light of the fact that to the east you have a commercial property. And you sit above it. And to the north you have a public park. And you sit above it. And what, what I mean to say is you've got buffers, you've got natural buffers on two sides that are problematic, um, that are not gonna be built. Correct. Hopefully.
Um, in your rear, the house on the eastern side, you have two doors.
Yes.
Are you proposing any uh, like walkways or anything outside of those doors?
No, they would stay the same, only they would be changed out instead of white and fire red.
I only point it out because you're somewhat closer to the impermeable coverage requirement.
Yep.
So if you decided at a later date to start building walkways, that might push you over.
Right.
Thank you. The intention is not to exceed the impermeable coverage requirement.
The chimney, I believe your mom's calling that to some degree.
That is correct.
There is an ordinance, ordinance requirement not to exceed four feet height above the highest portion of the roof.
Thirty inches.
Okay, so can you just mention that in plans?
Sure.
You know, later date.
Yeah, stipulate to be below four feet by the dimension.
And then the last question I have. Actually, next one. From outside agency standpoint, really interesting D E P is, is a factor here. You can bring up proximity to the vert. So can you go through the property channels of D E P to either get permits or? The letter of interest or jurisdictional determination to determine. So which permits would be required?
Yes, we'll stipulate to any sub, subject to cap for jurisdiction as, as applicable. And also with regard to your comment, age, Mr. Rizzo, again, this is in the X zone, so a flood hazard, this is not a flood hazard area. Flood hazard permit is not needed from the D E P on this.
And then I've said a couple of technical comments. Can you just address those?
We'll stipulate to addressing your technical comments as well. Thank you. For the questions, Chairman, Mr. Siegel.
No, looks like no.
And if anyone from the public has any questions.
Those are all, yeah.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Siegel. Okay, now Christine Cofone, licensed professional planner in New Jersey. Good evening, Ms. Cofone.
Good evening, Mr. Akins.
Uh, Chairman, would you like me to place Ms. Cofone's credentials on the record?
Well, not again, we'll stick with it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir Kovacs gives us specific instructions. So it's Cofone, C O F O N E. Uh, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Nice to see you again. It's been a decade. I hope you're intervening decade on this application has been well. I did have the pleasure of testifying originally on this application in two thousand and fifteen. I know it's been a long night and you've heard a lot of testimony already and I think the variance really has been well established. So I will get right to the statutory proofs such required for the board to grant the variances. When you heard this case back in two thousand and fifteen, you approved the bulk relief under both the C one and C two section of the statute. And what that means is that the C one is a hardship criteria, right? And lawful pre-existing structures, as well as the shape and size of the piece of property, are well-accepted statutory criteria for a C one basis. Certainly that still prevails today and I do think the bulks can be granted under the C one. In the absence of any seats, any, any hardships, the board can still grant and receive two, a flexible C if you find that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law. When we were here last time, of course, we talked about the aesthetics and the curb appeal of the application that would be increased um, by the um. By the improvements to the structure and I think that that still prevails today. So the board can certainly rely on criteria high. That's the bulk relief, the C variances. We do continue to need the D variance relief and that's for the F A R. And when you're hearing D variances, this board sometimes hears, I'm sure, D one use variances or you hear expansion of non-conformities and you're thinking of a particular sustainability. Um, on a D four variance, what you have to reconcile is can the site handle the additional F A R? Associated with the increase beyond which that is contemplated by the ordinance. And the prevailing case on D four variances in New Jersey is the Randolph Town Center case. And I testified to that last time I was here and I will testify again that it is my opinion that even with the de minimis increase to accommodate the, um, making it a more livable bedroom or the expanded family that this blended family has had a household restructuring together with um, Beth working at home and running her business uh, and needing the space. So created a little bit more livable space here. I do think that the site can still accommodate any problems associated with the F A R. And the reason I say that is because when you look at the standards for the R twenty zone, the lot coverage permissible is thirty-five percent. We're at thirty-three point seven. The building coverage permissible is twenty-five percent. We're at twenty-two point five. The height permissible in the R twenty zone is thirty-five. This structure is below twenty-eight. It's actually uh, just under twenty-seven. And then when you look at the maximum habitable floor area in this zone, it's four thousand four hundred, one hundred and forty, where what's being proposed is about three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. So in all instances where you're looking at the, the bulk and the massing of the structure and the coverage, we are at or below what was contemplated in the R twenty zone. So I think the board can comfortably conclude that the site continues to be able to support the F A R. I would also submit in testimony that the applicant couldn't put a birdhouse on this app, on this site or improve it in any way without seeking a D variance for F A R unless they demolish the house. The existing house already is not conforming. So the F A R in this zone is point one eight. The existing F A R is um, is not conforming, I believe it's uh, point, point two oh or point two eight, point two.
Point two oh eight.
Yeah, point two oh eight. So it's not conforming today. So we know that the site can handle a, a non-conforming F A R because it's kind of doing it. And I think that here. Statutorily, the board can look to and be guided by what he's contemplated for intensity in this zone and come to the conclusion that, you know, there is a changed circumstance in this area since two thousand and fifteen when the applicant bought um, had what the case performed the last time. You know, if you look at the zoning map, the um, the land we're immediately adjacent is now reflected on the zoning map as public land, public used land. So I think for all those reasons, um, it's my opinion that the bulk variance relief can be granted under the C one and C two section of the statute. And the applicant substantiates its burden of proof with respects to the D four variance and that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan um, here in Fair Haven if the board were to move favorably on this variance relief.
Very concise.
It's badly.
Now for the questions of Ms. Cofone, Mr. Chairman, who worked on this?
Ms. Cofone, I have a question about the, the multiple references to the home office. Um, because I, I just don't think about the use of the structure um, by the applicant or the subsequent owners being relevant to the decision-making of the board. You mentioned it in, in your testimony. Can you tie that up?
I understand why and I, I don't disagree with you. The, the, how the applicant tends to use the space inside doesn't matter, right? On the proofs. It matters what's around it, what matters, what is the, how the buffering looks, how it's gonna function. It's just, I think sometimes important for the board to understand what motivated the applicant to come back with a new design. So statutorily and textbook land use, it should have no, no basis on your, on your decision, but just to help the board. But just to help the board understand, it's always nice to understand the motivation behind why an applicant comes before a board.
You said the C two previously was based on the upgrade and change to the outside of the house. Um but this is a significant change from that previous application, which would have been, I guess, more in line with the the neighborhood, and this is sticking with the T one eleven siding, the, the seventies look of the house currently.
Yes.
Is that, do you feel that that's still supports the C two?
I do feel it still supports the C two, and I think that you can also look to the fact that the Architectural Review Committee unanimously approved this design. So I think that it was put before the board here, the Architectural Review Board, and endorsed by the board. So it's not, it's not just my opinion, but the Architectural Review Board's opinion as well.
Anything further, Ms. Phil?
No, not for me.
I'm sure you can drive back at you.
No further questions to Ms. Cofone. Applicant rests at this time, Chairman, board members. Thank you.
Let's, let's try the novel idea of mentioning to the public. Um, any members of the public have any questions or comments with regards to the Ford application?
Dear Chairman, Members, my name is Steve Kamen, K A I M A N.
You saw me swear the testimony before the board to be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, my wife and I and our two children live at fifty Fair Waters Lane, just to the uh to the west of of the applicant's house. Um, we, we've known them for, for twenty years. Um, we're very good friends. We, we believe in what they believe in. Um, we are confident that anything that they do will be in the best interest of their neighborhood aesthetically. And we believe in their commitment to the neighborhood, and we have no problem with anything that they give us.
Thank you, Mr. Kamen.
No, no questions.
No questions, Chairman.
Anyone else? In movement.
Yeah. Adam Schlesman, twenty five Fair Haven Road.
Good evening. You saw me swear the testimony before the board to be the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the twenty five Fair Haven Road, uh, the neighbor to the south, as I've mentioned a few times, uh, moved in in two thousand and twenty.
I'm sorry, you're immediately adjacent to the south?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so um we moved in two thousand and twenty, wife and two kids. Um, you know, we love our neighbors. They're great. Um, I think what they plan to do when they originally told us was very exciting for us as well. Uh aesthetically, you know, definitely is a, a huge help. Um, our, our veteran faces their house. So uh what they plan to do is definitely be uh much more appealing than what it is now. So uh, both supportive arguments that they have reverse.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
No questions, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Schlesman. Anyone else?
Hi.
Good evening.
Sixty Fair Waters Lane.
You saw me swear the testimony before the board, the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
I do. Um, I am directly across from them on the neighbor, directly across from them. Um, and I'm a hundred percent aware of what you're doing. Uh, it's gonna make a better view for us looking at the house from the front side for the uh roofline change and above the garage and that's actually on our record that we're, we're fine.
Thank you.
No questions, Chairman. That would be the trick.
Anyone else?
Hello, Raphael, twenty seven Fair Haven Road.
You saw me swear the testimony before the truth. You saw me swear that the testimony you give before the board will be the truth, but all truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Did you swear your name for the board?
R A P H A E L.
Thank you.
Our family moved in in two thousand and twelve, two doors, two houses south of the applicant. So we've known uh the applicant for quite a while, and we fully approve of everything that they plan to do. I think it will enhance the street, the neighborhood, and the town. So we fully support what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raphael. No questions, Chairman.
Anyone else? Let the record black not. Okay, uh, anything closing, Chris?
Nothing closing other than to thank the board for their consideration of this update from the two thousand and fifteen prior matter that was approved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks, Chris. Scott.
Pretty nice presentation and uh nice looking house.
I liked it in two thousand and fifteen. I like this one better than the one we approved in two thousand and fifteen, as a matter of fact. Um, I don't think the city, the side yards are a problem given the, the side of the house, the boatyard, and especially the park now, and now, always forward.
I agree. Further at nine thirty five.
No, nothing. Looks great. And a huge improvement. And uh, yes, no, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very nice.
Any further? No. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make one. I'll make a motion to approve the Ford application as presented based upon the accuracy of the record and based on the assessable um
rating.
Rating, yeah, uh, what drainage issue uh planned with Mr. uh, Mr. Rizzo.
Dr. Slegers designed dry well. Yeah, I just want to clarify. So I, I think the concept is to um to create a drywall design to um take as much water as possible to the east, where it is impossible, take it to the east to the drywall, take it to the south. Um, and the gutter design should be incorporated into that to the extent that the roof pitches and gutters can be run that direction. They should. And I think that should be submitted to you um and for you to sign off. Is that good?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Um, no.
I'll second it.
Mr. Natchezny?
Yes.
Ms. Angela, yes.
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Samson, yes. Mr. Chiletti?
No.
I'm.
Yes. Good job.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening.
About time. Get it going. All right, it is nine thirty, not really nine thirty seven. We got you again, Mr. Rinkens. We're uh, let's start, Mark.
Yes, running start. Did the board want to take a break at all? I can sit at it for two and a half hours.
Anyone need a comfort break? All right, yeah, I'll take comfort breaks. Take five.
Great. You get, you get a mental break after the first time.
All right, show.
Uh, Mr. Natchezny?
Here.
And love here.
Yes, here.
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 Here. Here. All right, Ms. Rinkens, we are hearing the matter.
Chairman, board members, again, good evening. Mark Aitkins on behalf of the applicant. At this time, I would just ask that constantly is confirmed that my service by publication and by certified man is in order.
Will be your witnesses up?
Thank you. Witnesses, come on up.
Yes.
You can raise your right hands if you're doing as well. You swear the testimony before you go to the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Before you start testifying, you state your name for the record, spelling your last name. Now just mark some exhibits.
So uh, we've got, yes, thank you. We've got uh A one, the plans prepared by Matthew Cronin, last revised, I believe, through January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty fifth. Does that sound right? Yes, it is. Yeah, okay. Revision date, January eighteen, two thousand and twenty five. Um, we have, we're gonna have a supplemental package of uh photo, color photographs consisting of one two, three pages depicting the existing conditions of the property inside and out, A two. Uh, we're also gonna have a supplemental schedule uh entitled the story description prepared by the architect uh dated February fifth, two thousand and twenty five, A three. That's all I have so far.
You can reference the Google aerial image. We could mark that as A four. The two resolutions, are they going to be, are we going to reference the?
If the board has questions, we certainly would.
We mark that as A six.
Five and six.
Five to six.
The eighty five and eighty nine resolutions. Mr. Kovacs, what was the aerial again? A four.
A four, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, you're developing application, the zone board adjustment application, the zone board adjustment application checklist and statement legal basis. That is A seven?
A seven.
And we'll mark that C B one, uh, C M E engineer report October second. We'll see the true order result was twenty three fourth. Uh, the uh C B two, the C M E engineer report, eleven, eleven twenty four, sort of important result, and what I guess I'll refer to as uh Z B two A, which is real little marked up version of the Z B two resolution.
Marked up as of December fourteen.
Yes, December fourteen. Thank you.
Were there any completeness items that we needed to address?
Yes. There are four checklist items. These are the typical four we have. Um, I'm sorry, that's why actually the first one is the draft notice. It goes out to the property owners and the newspaper. Maybe at this point we've discussed that notice is okay. Um, and then the other four are Monmouth County Planning Board, Freehold, S and B, Monmouth County Health Department applications. And then the last one is probably is of all covetous. It was noted. So I do not take exception. And then if I can quickly point out, there was reference to exhibit Z B two A, which was a marked up version of mine November eleventh, twenty twenty four, review letter number two. Um, the name change here is that the square footage uh, the floor area was reduced slightly. So Mr. Kovacs has this number um for the resolution. But I want to point out that in dropping this number, um, it's really just a factor of how the, how everything is calculated. The floor area ratio for, as proposed is point three nine nine, whereas the requirement is point four. So that will eliminate the D four variance for floor area ratio with where it would be compliant. And um the closed floor area is now four thousand four hundred and seventy square feet. That's still a variance. I'll let Mr. Cronin get into that, but I just want to make sure. That's explained for you.
Lockever stays the same. The fifty seven point one is correct.
Yeah, fifty seven point one. That's, that's the same.
So there's no farm.
Okay, got it. Yeah, it's just floor area and floor area issue.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. The Chairman, Board Members, uh, again, good evening. By way of brief history, this is an existing lot consisting of eleven thousand two hundred and fourteen square feet. It's in the R five zone where five thousand square feet is required, right? So we're better than twice the size of what's required in the R five. Presently at the property, there are two single-family residential buildings with these uses having been recognized as pri- uh prior existing non-conforming conditions by the board resolutions uh identified as November, uh rather dated November ninth nineteen eighty five and dated June fifth nineteen eighty nine and identified as A five and A six this evening. Uh, no changes proposed to the front residence, which has the frontage on Church Street and which has historically been rented to third parties and is presently occupied by Mr. Murch's father. Um, the rear residence is proposed to convert a portion of the existing loft space uh to create two bedrooms and one bath. Uh, the applicants have two uh young daughters. This will allow their daughters to each have a bedroom on the second floor and to share a new bath on that second floor as well. Uh, the residence presently has two bedrooms on the first floor with two baths and only a loft area above and almost an open barn-like condition. If you can picture a barn loft, that's what we've got. That barn loft today is used as a playroom. The photos when we distribute that, in fact, we might as well do that now. Um, the uh colored photos will send them around to paint uh the existing conditions on the inside and the outside as they're referenced by any other rear marks.
So are these previously marked? Were these?
Yes, they were marked. Yes. I think that was A two. Yeah.
Ms. Rinkens, you said these resolutions confirm that these houses are pre-existing, non-conformities and legally existing?
Yes, they do.
Doesn't confirm the origin of the dollar.
Doesn't confirm the origin. It just notes that they're recognized that they exist. That they exist, right? Right. So.
I, 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 I don't want to rub through this. So I, I want to understand.
I can come back. Yeah. I can come back to the resolutions.
So i- it's clear to me they've come to resolutions that the two structures existed when the board previously considered the changes that were incorporated based on these approvals. But the statement's not that. Statement is that the resolutions confirm that they are pre-existing, not legally existing.
The subject, here's, here's the resolution, following findings of fact from the October third eighty five, subject premises are non-conforming for the following reasons. Two residential structures contained on one lot. Front house has a front setback, et cetera, et cetera. Rear house is setback, et cetera, et cetera. All non-conformities are pre-existing. Think that squares the issue.
I think it just says that they're not, it just says that they're pre-existing. I don't think.
Well.
I, I, legal.
I, I, I don't really know what that means.
To terminate, yeah.
If, if, if the zoning in Fair Even dates back to the sixties, the, the idea would need to be that the houses would need to pre-exist that zoning, and they would need to be effectively grandfathered in their existing condition. I'm just, I'm just sensitive to the, to the statements that you're making, that they're effectively legal today as, as confirmed by these resolutions. Maybe we're splitting hairs. It is certainly, it would certainly be unusual for the boards to have twice made decisions with regard to changes to these structures and to have at the same time questioned their legality.
Right. So then the eighty nine resolution.
That even says less.
Yeah, it doesn't say an awful lot, but it's.
Can, can you? I'm sorry, I, I catch you.
Yeah, that's okay. The eighty nine resolution adds eight hundred and twenty five square feet to the existing residential structure to the rear of the property. Subject premise contains two dwelling units, which is not committed in the R five zone.
Yeah, those are the words that jumped out at me.
They made no judgment on it nor comment. They kind of, especially the eighty five resolution, they noted as a, as a matter of course, but don't, it's a form of as if they didn't want to deal with it.
That's kind of the way I read it.
But they also say there are no residential uses to the rear of the subject property.
Is that? No, that's the strength.
On the property or is that?
No, behind.
Beyond.
Beyond.
Meaning, meaning behind the subject property, not, not to the.
Yeah, I think that's what it means to.
Because it's B one over there, is that?
That's not really. No, because it's strange. There, there's a big vegetated area behind.
Well, it's B one as well, or it's, it bumps up to.
Well, and you're not residential in that.
Correct.
Right, that's fair.
Right, in the second, whereas, well, it's the second paragraph says applicant's proposed construction will result in a more livable and attractive rear house. Clearly, who's living in the rear house?
Yeah.
No, it says it was dilapidated and.
But it depends on which resolution you're rep. And can you, can you tell the board in the November eighty five resolution, Mark tells this? So. Also, A five, it, it, it references, it has all of the preliminary language as to jurisdiction. And then I, I read the following, whereas the board, after carefully considering the evidence presented by the applicant and the adjoining property owners and the general public, blah, 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 whoa, whoa, uh, October third eighty five makes the five following findings of fact, the subject premises are non-conforming for the following reasons. One, two residential structures contained on one lot. Two, front house has front setback of twenty point six feet where twenty five feet are required. Three, front house has side yard of four point three feet where five feet are required. Four, garage has side yard of one point nine feet where five feet are required. Five, rear house has rear yard of four point five feet where thirty feet are required. And they talk about the non-conformities, the existing subject structure is in a dilapidated contr- condition. Which structure are we talking about? It doesn't seem to be any, I, I, I looked at the resolution a couple of times. I'm interested. Maybe I missed something, but I can't tell. But I can't tell which structure. Received relief.
It must be the back one if there was.
No, it's neither, it's a shed.
Well, I'm just, I. I'm going to say it does not have proper foundation, podiums or or floor. The proposed construction will conform on all matters to the existing building code, there will be no substantial impact on neighboring properties.
Yeah, the first page says remove the dilapidated attached storage shed and replace same with new construction.
Yes, there's a variance for a shed, not for the building.
Um, yeah, it's. Attached, but it's not.
Where is the shed?
Where?
No, it's the variance was to construct the new. No, understood, I don't see a shed on any of the.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out.
Is what is now the house, was that? Was that a dilapidated shed?
It says remove a dilapidated storage shed and replace it, the same with new construction.
That's it.
So it's got to be attached to one of those. Residents.
Maybe we could ask the architect if he might have reached an opinion based upon the investigation of the conditions. I I haven't qualified it yet, though.
No, no.
I still on my introductory comment.
Sure, yeah.
That's okay.
That's right, sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay, we, the chairman wanted to get into the resolutions, I think we did. We did, okay, so uh. At at certainly we can come back to the resolution. But if I could continue with my introductory comments, then we'll we'll get Mr. Cronin's qualifications on the record, and then we can maybe address the question about how do we get from shed to. Possible improvements presumably on the rear of the two buildings.
If the hammer and tongs down now?
Okay, alright, very good, okay. So, um. As I indicated, uh, the outset where where I was, um, the rear residence footprint is proposed to be increased by approximately twenty nine square feet. All of the new construction is proposed to be contained within the existing footprint of the rear structure. The applicants eliminated a previously applied for and noticed F A R variance. Of a D four or use variance. Since this is the expansion of a nonconforming use, a D two or use variance is required, of course, which we've also noticed. The main new variances are for exceeding the maximum floor area, twenty two hundred square feet permitted. Four thousand two hundred and one square feet is existing. And four thousand four hundred and seventy square feet is proposed. So twenty two hundred is permitted, forty four seventy is proposed. Going up from forty two oh one for both dwellings combined. Exceeding maximum lot coverage. Fifty percent is the max, we're at fifty seven, we're proposing fifty seven point one, so going up a tenth of a percent. There are also new variances for relatively minor deviations for principal side yard setback, combined side yard setback and principal rear yard setback.
Are those new, I'm sorry, are those new variances?
Those are exacerbations of existing conditions as a result of the additional, right? So the applicants will show by testimony from their experts that the request relief is reasonable, appropriate for this neighborhood. Consistently designing ordinance in the master plan. And this this unique property and house configuration is analogous to two homes. On two slightly oversized lot, right? Two homes of twenty two hundred square feet would be forty four hundred square feet, where forty four seventy. Two homes on five thousand square foot lots would be ten thousand square feet, where eleven thousand square feet, so just as a as a as a thought for the board. So with that, um. And at this time, I'd like to place Mr. Cronin's credentials on the record, Chairman.
Just one point I was interested is the twenty two hundred is the max.
Understood.
So not the five thousand, it would be a. Greater square footage for the lot.
Yes. So, Mr. Cronin, do you possess any licenses from the state of Jersey?
Uh, yes, licensed architect in state of Jersey.
That's okay, we can save time, Mr. Cronin, you lose any since seeing us last?
I have none.
Let's take the latest from Mr. Cronin's conventions.
Okay, so, um, earlier this evening, you you heard the chairman ask a question as to. Um, the nineteen eighty five resolution. Have you reached a? A determination as to what might have been substituted for what with regard to that?
It appears, excuse me, yes, um, on the second sheet of my photos there.
That's A two?
A two, I uh. I show uh. Photos of the four sides of twenty five A, which is the the house we're working on. If you look at the south, from the southeast corner shop we have. You see the rear or the east side of the house. These are shed roofs, they're not very well constructed. One of the reasons we're doing this is because they're they're not. Even if they're well maintained, but they're just. They've outlived their life cycle. Um, these are low ceilings in these spaces, they are part of the living space, there's part of the bedroom, a bathroom and a laundry room back there. Which we intend to. Essentially replicate in the. Modern co-compliant construction. So I would, uh, the sheds would be the, in my opinion, would be the east side, it's about a ten foot deep swath of the. Of the the twenty five A.
Could you, so could you just, I'm going to hold up A two, could you just circle that with your finger that you just were were pointing out up there? Okay, so.
What was the shed?
The the back, the back of the, the back of the rear building?
Yes.
In 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 simpler terms.
I I'm sorry, so the theory is that the the structure, the appendage in the southeast corner photo. Was at some point a shed? Is it now a shed?
No, it's it's living space.
And and you think was the, you think the approval eighty five was to convert the shed to living space?
Yes.
Okay. Where do you draw that conclusion? How do you draw that?
They referenced an only spot in this building that it can be unless something else was torn down.
As in they would have left the shed roof and it says remove, did they leave the shed roof removed?
I don't know.
And then build new construction under that shed roof?
We haven't opened it up yet, but we do have, there are low. I will call them shed roofs, the the single slope roof across the back of the house. It's that the ceilings are low, it does not look like the front two thirds of the house.
But by that, but by that logic, the whole thing is basically one giant shed without the A frame picture, I I don't. Think they would demol-, if if you're going to rebuild it. You're not, you're not going to rebuild the shed ceiling and then say, well, this is looks a little bit like a shed, let's add a regular house to the rest of this. I think it's a stretch, I think the house, I think the shed that was demolished is not what we see here. That's my.
Well, again, it's referenced, if.
From A.
My final question, it says remove the dilapidated, I'm looking at eighty five. I'm just, and I'm interested in your, I I I'll I'll take whatever conclusions you get, but it says. Remove a dilapidated attached shed. And replace the same with new construction.
That would mean.
And then in, and then in the front, and then at the back, it says it's nonconforming for the following reasons. Two residential structures contained on one lot.
So, I understand that as there is a shed. Attached to an existing home. The the one, the second residence, what we're calling twenty five A.
But then it would say demolish an existing home with the shed.
They're just demolishing the shed part of the.
I know, I I I I asked the question, you've given me the answer, I I watched your insurance. Uh, so so it would seem to me that they're talking about a shed and not living space, and they got caught up with zoning and they couldn't do anything without getting board approval. And they might have had to come in for a shed. I don't see anything that would, at least I'm not hearing anything that makes me convinced that this was approved. For living space, although it does acknowledge that there were two structures, habitable structures at the time. But I don't know that, I I I really don't know that I agree that that confirms that this rear shed roof area of the house was approved through that resolution. Have have you been in the front house?
Yes.
And the the. Kitchen that's on the rear of that, that. Here would be part of the original houses or is that newer?
That's actually, there's a billco toward that I've been through to get into the partial basement and the foundation is. Pretty old under there.
So I have another question, so we we had a similar one of these come at some point. In the last, whatever, right, year or two?
That could be much longer if you were here.
Yeah. That had on Church Street nonetheless, that had a a dwelling in the back, right, and. What they were able to prove to some degree. Was that it was continuously occupied, right? And that they had. Fire maps and aerial photos. Going back in time that proved that that was there. Yeah, that's that's correct, yeah. Uh, maybe, rest of these.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that it was. You know, not only continuously occupied testimony, but that there were aerial photos and sandborne maps that this. Existed, do you have anything that shows that? Because. It seems to me, one of two things, either it was there. And it was, it was, it's been occupied the whole time, which would be great, right, or. It it because I I I agree, I think it's a a a real stretch to say that what they're referring to in that resolution is this. At least it's vague enough where it's. There's a lot of reasons, you know, so do we have any photos or? Any knowledge of how this was used going back? Um, at least before these resolutions or no?
I don't have the aerial books, uh, historic aerials are ten point.
I I I would suggest this, I I think it's clear based on the resolutions that there's been two dwelling units at least back to nineteen eighty five.
Right.
I don't think the resolutions prove that the structures that were approved, were approved by these boards. Or that the structures as they exist ever received any board approvals, these seem like. Prefunctory approvals about other things because the property's so unusual.
Yeah.
That it required the board, i- i- is there anything, if we're, if we're trying to establish that you have currently existing a legal. How many square?
Two.
Well, two, two structures totaling forty four hundred square feet?
Uh, two structures totaling forty two hundred square.
Okay, so if, can we establish that, that forty two hundred is currently in, I I I, if we would concede. Based on the two resolutions, that the two dwelling units have existed for a long time, okay? Maybe before zoning, let's just concede that, because they didn't stop at that.
Right.
But how do we know that what's there at forty two hundred today? Is there a way to know that that is all good to go?
Well, you can certainly, not that it's dispositive, we've established that, you know, as 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 for time immemorable, we'd certainly check the property tax records. And see what what those records show, we could check things like the sandboard maps, we could check, you know, other historical indices. But I didn't think that that was a question based upon forty year old resolutions.
I I, look, I don't know that it really is, I think the question here is how many pounds of potatoes are we going to put in this bag, right? I mean, just to put it bluntly, so you've got a lot of square feet on a lot, and and I know that it's above the minimum.
We we have a lot of square footage, but only a small increase in the footprint and and we're trying to reconcile. A- a- and again, you know, maybe we need to do some forensic architecture and say, look, this is a structure that was built in eighteen ninety or was built in nineteen ten or whatever. Um, and if that's what the board is looking for to help justify how we're trying to reconfigure what's going on on the inside, we could certainly do that.
There would be a big difference to say, we've got. Forty two hundred square feet a house, and we're looking to reconfigure forty two hundred square feet a house. And we've got resolutions, it's been seen, and all we're asking is to not be hamstrung to do anything on this property. Versus adding two hundred square feet to something that we don't really know what. What predate zoning, what is actually. Popetic based on prior approvals, I I'm just, I'm just flagging it as a question for you. I understand that it's a small addition based on the overall, but I don't think that it's clear to me that we've got forty two hundred legal. It seems to me.
Okay.
And 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 I wouldn't even question a regular residential structure.
Right.
This one's unique, you don't see a lot of these, we don't see a lot.
No, absolutely, you know, I mean, we could produce, you know, certificates of occupancy, we could produce, you know, things, we could produce a lot of things.
You've got a second address, so, I mean, there's a lot of people that acknowledge that there's a second living dwelling unit back here.
Right.
It's clearly been there a long time, that that's clear, I I don't know that we need to get into whether or not the the two structures is legal. I just, I'm I'm struggling slightly with. The square footage overall and and how it got to.
For for, so how long has the square, has this square footage forty two hundred change existed? That's the, that's the question you're looking to have answered.
No, no, I'm just throwing it out there, I I'm starting with, I think, the proposition that we've got forty two hundred confirmed into resolutions as as legal. And we're we're splitting here, tonight's symphony.
We, I can't. So I'll, well, so I'll, I'll share this, right, the last one that came before us was on Church Street. Coincidentally, probably not far from where this was. And we were able to establish that the building as it sat looked literally exactly how it looked like in nineteen twenty or whatever it was, it literally was the exact same footprint.
Yeah, we did, we did see that, that's true.
So. To that, and then there was a separate sewer pipe, there was all these things that. Led you to believe that perhaps it's been there a long time, perhaps it's been consistently occupied and you could get over it. Here, it's a resolution, doesn't have much color. You have a house, you have a lot of square footage. Albeit, maybe the lot's a little larger. And it's odd, and we don't, you know, you don't see two on one property, and a lot of people in town, I think, would like that. And it's a dangerous kind of thing to trickle down without. You know, at least for my opinion, the appropriate proof that it was there. Well, for all, you know, it could be a shed that was reconstructed, they added a bunch of stuff to it and it just sat like that. And then at some point someone gets an address and before you know it, it's a house, right?
Um, the truth is, we don't know one way or the other, we really don't.
It's it's ambiguous.
I just want to point out that the front house includes basement square feet. Probably wasn't originally included and also.
At at the forty two hundred, that includes the basement in the front, because it's an access.
Yes.
How much, how much basement is that?
Two hundred and forty two square feet for the basement, but it also includes a small amount that's. The, under the roof of the first floor. So, second floor floor area.
So, I'm sorry, what was the basement number?
Two two forty two, two forty two.
Alright, so let's not lose track of that number, that that number's really important, you shouldn't be penalized by that number as we run through these numbers for what you're proposing. And what's the second piece of that?
I don't know the number, but there's um. Area under the roof of the first floor. There, if you can see the second floor floor area, where the uh, the height is greater than thirty inches.
Is that on the back portion that comes out with this?
Yeah, over the back tail there, yes, okay, and how many, how many square feet is that? I do not have that, I just put it as a long number.
I don't think it's significant.
Your your forty four seventy include that two forty two then?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so netted out, it's two sixty nine versus two two forty two, you're, it's almost a wash.
So. So the forty four seventy includes the basement.
Number of two s- of two forty two. And we're, and we're proposing an increase of two sixty nine, it's almost a wash.
Yeah, so.
You're with, you're within twenty seventeen.
What's the existing forty two oh one, that forty two oh one? Does that include the basement calculation?
Yes.
Yeah, why is it a wash?
Well, it's almost a wash, it's a wash.
If you take the basement out.
If you take the basement out and you add the square footage from the, from the back.
If it's a real, if it's a real structure, right? It's it's a starting point, I mean, the starting point's one thing or the other, right?
But still, plus.
Realistically, the the the. Then the number, we should make everyone know that the number includes the the basement which is triggered by the new ordinance, a hundred percent.
Also, the area over the the rear of the first floor is forty square feet, that is higher than thirty inches.
Okay, so that's forty plus two sixty, so we're going to call it three hundred. Everybody in your mind, keep that three hundred in mind, that is a penalty for the new ordinance and the way they do the house. That is not habitable square footage, uh, in a conditional sense. I'm trying to figure out what the existing is. The zoning table shows. Three thousand eight ninety eight. Uh, but your. Your building floor area breakdown shows three thousand nine hundred and thirteen. Do you know which of those is correct? Or either. Are either correct? Um.
New York it does, yeah, which which ones are?
In the zoning table worksheet, under maximum allotments, maximum habitable floor area. Existing, three thousand eight hundred and ninety eight. When the building floor area breakdown. Below both. Houses, it says. Uh, total habitable floor area for the lot. Three thousand nine hundred and thirteen. I'm just trying to figure out where we're starting.
I probably just wasn't calculating all the way through, I have um. Four thousand two hundred and one square feet, that includes the basement.
It is thirty eight ninety eight. Okay, um.
There, I'm getting lost in numbers here, I I. Personally calculated it. So I'll definitely want to utilize my number to make sure that.
Just so I'm clear, because I think I've lost a little something in the translation here, could you, could, uh, Mr. Rosa, could you please restate? What we're looking at, uh, given a given table, a given column, and a given figure, please?
I mean, I I need a little help getting navigated through these charts, but I I separately calculated it.
Okay.
Okay, what did you get to?
The existing would be four thousand two hundred and one square feet.
And that includes the two hundred and forty two. Quarter feet of basement in the front house.
Yes.
So this claims. To include that. But shows a total.
Three nine one.
For the lot of three thousand nine hundred and thirteen, so.
Can I ask you what uh, what is the revision?
Yeah, you look January eighteen twenty five.
Is that, is that ten?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the current one, yeah. I'm working on it, so.
There's not a change though.
It shouldn't change. The existing shouldn't change.
Well, we were working through the calculation of the existing. That that changed all the way.
Right, but the question that you were working through was the inclusion of the basement or no?
Yeah, yeah, it's the same.
So, I mean, if we go with the forty two oh one, right, which is obviously the worst case scenario.
Yes.
Between these two, right, it's still thirty nine oh one after that three, that rough three hundred square foot. Let's call it a penalty. Ordinance change penalty that's in there.
That's a fair, that's a fair point.
So thirty nine oh one is kind of the.
If you back up three hundred.
Correct, right, that's kind of the, on the worst case scenario, we don't, I guess. There's still the question of why this is here, but. Well, I guess the question is, is the F A R.
Well, it shouldn't change really, it's not gonna change, I guess.
The F A R is not an issue. Yes, we don't have an F A R back. Any longer, but but we, but we do have a D for expansion of the money.
Right, correct, yeah.
I'm gonna make a suggestion because it is, I think it's really ten fifteen. Got fifteen minutes, I'm really anxious to see the plans, I'd like to understand what's actually being proposed so that we can at least all get a sense of it.
Sure.
Um, before we run out of time.
That's, that's fine, let's jump right to those plans.
Yeah, sixteen.
All right, uh. We've got the three buildings on the site, the front house that we're not uh, adding to twenty five. The two car garage which is being used as the shed, then we've got the rear house. Which is twenty five day available. Uh. Here's the first floor plan existing and proposed. The, we have a two story living room in the front, so the loft over top of an existing master bedroom suite. We come back to an existing kitchen that is a cathedral space.
Sir Crone, you might as well.
I'm sorry, we've got a. A kitchen that's an existing cathedral space, you you can see these spaces on the third sheet of the photos, the interior of twenty five eight. A little bit back, actually, yeah, now come in on your left. There you go. And then we've got uh, an existing. Uh, be- bedroom for the two daughters, bedroom number two, then coming back here, the low area that we're gonna be removing. Is partially the rear of this bedroom, we've got a a. Wall bathroom with a with a shower, and then we've got a laundry or mudroom in the back here. There's an existing outdoor shower that's remaining and it is existing. Uh, or the landing, really, that's remaining. What we intend to do on the first floor is uh, you come in the front door on the south side as it shows on the photos. We are adding a closet to create more of an entry space. Where make the bedroom number two into an office, but it can be used as a bedroom because it's still got a closet. We are enclosing this fifteen point three square feet, which is the only addition. To the. Portion of the house, really. Uh, to the, to the coverage, I should say.
But this notch, this notch here.
Notch.
This notch.
Seven by two foot four.
Gets imposed.
And we, we extend the bathroom and add a linen closet, but the bathroom fixture is made about the same, we can't even get a second vanity in there.
Is that notch the reason your, like, this coverage is going up?
Yes, fifteen square feet, uh, it's about the, that's the point one percent. Uh, and then the laundry room remains essentially intact. Um. Uh, thing we're gonna be using two by six walls and uh. There were uh, the. More modern co-compliant framing. And construction. And then uh, we're, we've got the porch landing here, we're adding a post. Because over the, on the second floor. Currently, we have the stairs going up to the loft as you see in the photos there. We've got the the clear story space over the kitchen and dining. To the rear of it, one of the photos is taken from there, we've got the open area into the, into the living room. And then we've got the the low roofed area in the back, which we're gonna be removing and reconstructing. We end up with a. Twenty three foot four by thirty two foot four. Excuse me, additions built from the kitchen wall back. Uh, rectangular squared off to the perimeter of the house. We've got a, an entry hall here, we've got a. A mechanical room and some storage, then we've got two bedrooms for, one for each daughter and a shared bathroom in the center. Uh, we've got a hidden attic stair in the hallway there, then we access the. The loft just as it had been accessed.
And what does that look like elevation wise?
Elevation wise, the. Front, essentially, almost the front, two thirds, little more than the front half of the house remains intact. We removed the.
The front is on the left?
This is the front, this is the street side of the front, so we will still have the same profile, we will have the addition set back about twenty five feet. The additional have two windows up over the. The gable of the existing. The, the existing roof, then we are. Creating a second floor with a low plate height, a low wall height to ease the mass of it down, so the walls are gonna be. The exterior walls are gonna be about seven feet where the. Where the rafters sit, then we've got a shed dormer just to add some interest to it, where our windows are on the two sides. The two sides are pretty much identical for the second floor.
So that each side contains that shed dormer element?
Correct, yes, then we've got uh, we're, we're squaring out over the existing porch, so that's where our additional building coverage comes. It's not additional incurious because it's already a porch there. And then we are at the rear, we are. Uh, squaring it off, as I said, we've got two windows overlooking the creek and um. At Fairhaven Commons, a little window in the bathroom and a double window in the other bedroom.
Do you think you're gonna be able to see the second story? Pretty clearly from the. The street as you drive by, it's like this one elevate, this one uh, photo here on the right, the bottom right. You know, kind of from the angle, the way the house hitch, it's kind of right. Your focus point down the driveway.
I think you'll see it, but I don't think it'll be obvious. That was, our intent was to try to obscure it for lack of a better word, as much as we could.
And and how presently the second house, how far set back? Uh, in the property is it, I estimated it to be about a hundred and twenty five feet, but that's, that's just my estimation.
From the front?
Yeah, from the front, from the front property line on church.
We can see we're clearly in this set.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that was the, that's the exploded picture that I was looking at. It is one, it's it's just the exploded, yeah, it's the same.
The hundred fifty one square foot from the front yard setback.
Hundred fifty.
To the front of.
The front of the second.
Twenty five eight.
And then the. The addition is another twenty five feet past that.
Right.
Mr. Crone, what's the ridge height of the existing structure right now?
It is uh, twenty foot ten.
It's just, so, uh, from the front of the house.
Yes, here.
So, it seems to me that if I were trying to figure out how to do this. With the least amount of impact. But the first thing I would think to do is to change what I'm gonna call the front loft. Into the bedrooms, by not altering the ridge height at all, and popping two shed dormers on the left and the right. And you technically don't change the square footage at all, and you might be able to get your bedrooms and maintain the structure exactly as it sits. Did you entertain that?
We looked at that a bit and we didn't. For a couple of reasons, one is the, the ridge, as you'll see in the, in the photo, the third sheet of photos. The ceiling is very low in this area, so uh, uh, shed dormer coming out. Would have to be either very shallow or. Uh, we would have to do something else, the other would was also that we. Were combining the second floor addition with the reconstruction of the rear of the house, which has to be done anyway. So we were, we were trying to contain the construction in one area.
And achieve greater efficiencies?
Yes. And, yeah.
Really, really.
The living room without the, the cathedral space would, would, it's a small living room, it feels big because it's open to the law.
What's a small living room is the second house on a lot that has two houses. It's an accessory house, that's what it is, it's like a, it's like an A D U that you would find somewhere, that's why it's a small house, because it's a second house.
Yeah, it is, are are the two homes, are are they occupied by the same family or the two separate families here?
Occupied by the same family but capable of being rented to unrelated parties. Historically, and historically done so, including during my client's ownership of properties.
Property.
Do you mean like immediate family or?
Mr. Rose's father's living in the front house right now.
So, uh, uh, help me understand, when, with with regard to my suggestion. You've got walls, so, so where at, where the, where the roof meets the exterior walls, what's the height of those walls?
Uh.
That's right.
That's it, eight foot ceiling on the first floor.
So. It, okay, there's plenty of houses with eight foot ceilings, could you not run? Door Joyce and restructure it so that you wound up with a second story under that roof line? I I didn't understand why you said it wouldn't work.
Uh. Let me grab my scale.
If the back of the house is being rebuilt.
But that's not a reason.
No, I know, but that was, what was. Yeah, justified to. So that, that eight hundred and twenty five square foot addition in nineteen eighty nine. Was everything from the staircase forward, that front half of the house is nineteen eighty nine.
Right.
So the existing living room, the existing bedroom back. Walk-in closet entry and the loft above it is nineteen eighty nine.
Can you show me that, Mr. Crone, on on your plans, I'd be interested. Would be actually, the eighty nine resolution approved an eight hundred and twenty five square foot addition to the front of the house?
Yes, and and this is twenty five feet by thirty two and change, which is eight hundred and twenty five feet. So they didn't approve the loft above it, I, apparently.
The, I believe Mr. Sheu that he's talking about this area here.
Do you agree with that, Mr. Crone, is that an addition from dating back to about eighty nine?
They look like they were constructed at different times, we haven't taken any sheetrock off the walls because of.
Yeah, but you're saying you need to rebuild the back of the house?
Yes.
And not the front of the house, so.
The front of the house is probably newer. And also, the, the ridge is only one feet. Above the, the second floor. So if you did the. I'm not gonna do the trick standing here, but if you did the trigonometry with any sort of a roof getting out to the. Exterior wall, getting, getting out to any reasonable bedroom size, the roof would be low, yes, you could do different kinds of dormer. We just discounted that as. The Berthas love that part of the house, they just, that's what sold them on it. Um, and we felt that uh, we could kill two birds with one stone, fix the rear, the problems that they have at the rear of the house. Get the additional. Bedroom space that they're looking for, have it as least impactful from the street as possible. And a- as we considered possible, and um. Those are a lot of the decisions that went into showing it in the back, to designing it for her. I think we, we would really have to rebuild the front roof in order to get dormers into, make those bedrooms work.
From the trinkets, I want to find a logical place to pause this for tonight. There are people here and my inclination is to give them an opportunity if they have any comments or questions about what we've done so far. Because they've sat through three hours of this, um. Are you comfortable pausing where you are?
Well, uh. You know, I'm hopeful to get some additional feedback from the, from the board members, because if we're gonna go in, you know, in a different design direction, I think. I'd like to make sure that I understand everybody's approach to that. Um, the, the idea, the idea, the main goals here. Were as, I I mean, the answer is then, yes, I think we can pause, but the main goals that were sought to be achieved were to reconcile the older part of the house. I guess relative to the newer part. Um, and create a design that allowed. Uh, basically a suite for the, for the girls. And at the same time have it be as, as minimally impactful to the property in the neighborhood as possible. So that's why it's set back in the back of the second house, just to, just to keep it very simple. So if we're talking about redesigning something, then it would have a greater impact potentially to neighbors. You know, the property and and what have you, if we're gonna, if we're gonna kind of add on to the first floor of the front of the house. We could do that, obviously, and stay within that existing footprint, reallocate the square footage that way. But it would be a fundamental change with the, from, as compared to the approach that we've had so far.
Look, my, my, my angle is. To try to figure out how to deal with this structure, which has clearly been there a long time. In ways that minimizes the impact to the surrounding neighbors, in light of the fact that this is highly unusual. Um, even in this area where we have some accessories dwelling units. They're not this big. Um, I actually think I was in this house years ago, and I think it was described to me as a. I don't know what this is, because it's so unusual.
Right.
Um, how, how many square feet are in the structure that you're playing with, how many are right now? Just the structure.
Total is, looks like twenty three forty five, right? Total habitable floor area?
How is that twenty three hundred square feet? Well.
Probably because the.
Those are the law.
Twenty four twenty one, because a lot of the loft and the space over the kitchen counts.
Yeah.
But I, but but from my side, I would angle that to your advantage, you've got it. It counts, it's there, reconfiguring it and coming back and helping us understand how you're gonna repurpose it. To try to show us that you can do it in a way that you're never gonna know we touched it, but we can make use of it in a much better way. This is not that. It it's, it's, it's taller, it's larger, it's intensifying misuse even further, and it's a lot. It's a lot, and I know that we talked about the five thousand square foot minimum, but I can probably count on this many hands, how many R fives are five thousand square feet? They're almost all seventy five hundred square feet, ten thousand is not unusual, all the neighboring lots are this large. But it's here, I I'm sure everybody's sensitive to the fact that it's here. And so trying to figure out how to deal with it.
Right.
It's something we all need to do together, but I'm telling you that from my perspective. As I, as I even look at that one picture where you can see straight back, kind of looks like a cottage, I can almost buy it. You will no longer be able to buy that when you do a second story, it will clearly be a second house. That will be as large as most houses that sit on side lots like this all by themselves.
So, so I have an R five lot, and it's a hundred and fifty deep, and mine goes through to the next block, right, which is a rare thing. But I will tell you, my lot is eight thousand square feet or eighty five hundred, it's really oversized and. You know what, it's not that far when you look at the back of the house, because I have a garage back there, if there was a second story on there, it'd be a hulking. Thing where. I think at least, and and I just speak for myself, I think I, I just really well understand what's gone on there before we went through one of these, we scrutinized it heavily. It was only a few hundred square feet, that house, that little thing, whatever, whatever you wanna call it, it was like, it was like four hundred and eighty square feet. This is a full blown second structure, you could see it. I think you're bastardizing something to try to make it livable, I understand there's a family involved, I, you know, not trying to jam you up, but. It, it, this was never meant to be a second full blown livable house. For a family, it's, it's really an accessory dwelling thing, maybe a single person to live there, whatever. But you're trying to make it into something that's not, and that's why it seems so egregious, in my opinion. And and again, that's solely in my opinion. But, I would like to see how long it's been there and understand all that, because it has been there, and we're not trying to say you can't use it or. Any of that, but it's a big ask, and I think the, the jump from reading the variants, I think it's a. I think it's a really big jump to make, it's really unclear. And to that end, if if it was a shed that was reconstructed and there's an, then there's the resolution after that, something may have happened in between. And again, that's not, you know, we, we weren't here for it, but it doesn't mean that we're, you just do this, uh, so that's just my opinion.
I tend to agree with the chairman, I think, I mean, you've got two thousand square feet shed, we've got all the open space in there.
Yeah.
That we can use, you know, of those.
Can I? Sure, please. Patrick Murtha, when you are T H A, it's, it's not a two thousand square foot shed. There's a five hundred square foot garage on this, on this property, this back house. Might be twelve hundred and fifty square feet.
Right, the way, the way it measures is two thousand, because you're counting all that, all the open loft space, that's what we're getting at, is that. By the numbers, you've got that. You know, that's that, and it kills you, I get it.
Yeah, alright.
But it is a fair point that.
Way to use it.
Yes.
And it is a fair point, sir, that it lives smaller than that, but I think the point is that you have that some of that space and maybe there's a way you can utilize it without making this seem like. A second house on the back, it is very visible. Um and look, there we get it, on Church Street, there's quite a bit of these, but again, they're all really small, this is like a full blown second house. And I think with that second thing, it may almost feel bigger from the street than the house that. Actually fronts the street.
It seems to me like it needs a super light touch, and it needs to repurpose any of these lofted areas to make them usable. And some discussion about some minimum expansion of the structure itself, some minimum expansion to make it work. Without. Without really changing the character of it, because it's 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 out of character, it's been there a long time, I don't I don't I don't quarrel with that. But but boy, this feels like an expansion of a non-conforming use and just the kind of stuff that is really, really hard to to figure out. That's that's what it feels like, it doesn't feel like plus two hundred square feet to me. How many square feet are in the front house?
So the habitable floor area of the front house is fourteen eighty is um.
It's thirteen twenty six plus the plus the basement and all, it's fifteen sixty eight per day.
Sorry, it's fifteen sixty eight.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Yeah, let's forget about this.
So the back house is in fact already bigger.
It would be, the back house was originally.
The way you measure it.
Probably seven hundred sixty five square feet before nineteen eighty nine.
Yeah, that's that's right.
House has had the the. Wraparound porch winterized.
So it look in eighty nine, in eighty nine, essentially, this same discussion happened before a different board, and it was, look, we gotta make some use of it. And they let him have eight hundred and twenty five square feet, which now includes a lofted area as well, so i- it's already happening, we can see it on the paper.
I mean, you can say that the design in eighty nine was bad, they should have made better use of that square footage. In the house designed.
Well, because it was never expected for supposed to be a second full house, it was a back house. With two two bedrooms and a little loft area, whatever.
So so Mr. Akins, I I um I I I struggle because you you leave halfway through the discussion, and it's a lot, this is this is a hard one. This is a really hard one, and and I I I've just uh. I caution you about reading too much, you know what we're talking about, because we haven't fully gotten through it, but you know, certainly you've got our initial indications. I I do want to open it up to anybody that's been sitting here, if anybody has any questions or comments with regard to what we've done so far, um because people have been waiting this long.
Sure, that's fine, that that's a perfect time to do that, thank you.
Um so I'm gonna invite anyone who's here who has any questions or comments with regard to the Murtha application.
Amal Sullivan.
I I need, I'm sorry, you just step forward, it's our microphone, pick up, you need your name and your address for the record, and where you swear it.
Amal Sullivan, O S U L L I V A N.
You saw him swear the testimony before the board, be the truth, all truth, that was true.
Well, address.
Nineteen church. I just want to say that. I have no problem with their addition. It would be well behind us, we could barely see the house as it is. I don't think I'll get any issue with the vegetation.
Where's your house approximately, the twenty or Jason? Uh on which side?
North.
So your your lot is actually even longer. And 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 how large is your house?
Twenty eight.
It's just this one, or do you also have a dwelling in the back?
No, we have the original. Um barn from the church that used to be there.
Yes.
It's. Like the size of that other dwelling in um fifteen there. The other side, you know, the one we were talking about there.
So the smaller, yeah, yeah.
Not far enough to have seen this addition though in the eighties.
No, although my mother attended the brick there.
She what?
Attended her part meetings there.
Oh.
So it was a functioning house.
Yeah, I I I think we all, I think we all. Conceived it, it it's been two houses for a long time. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody on the board members want to share any other comments?
Right direction to the.
So now, um look, I I I see this as a very, very difficult um property, largely. Um I I think the board recognizes that um. What you presented as the difficulties in trying to figure out how to make it work. Um. We we just need to, we just need to figure out. Okay.
Thank you.
So Mr. Akins, uh I I guess I would need you to uh tell us that you would like to carry.
Do we like to carry to the next meeting, uh March sixth for now? Uh with no further redenewal, I'm gonna provide the necessary extension of time for decision.
Sheila, what what is uh what's on for Mark?
You.
Okay. Okay, I think we should, I I think I I will make the motion to carry it to March sixth and and Mr. Akins, I think we just carry you right to the front of the line. Uh to the extent you're gonna proceed with the plans that you have, to the extent that you've decided that you're gonna make adjustments or whatever, please let us know.
We will.
Um because we're not gonna put anything else on the agenda for March, uh if we now have three.
Understood, yes, we'll try to convey that right away to uh. The board secretary, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh okay, so I just made the motion in a second and I've. We'll call when you're ready, Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good evening, we appreciate the board's extra time at this late hour, thanks.
Thank you.
Right, very very quickly. Thanks, George, two small administrative items, minutes from January eighth meeting. The late motion to approve the minutes of this meeting, all second. Now. Yes.
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 Yes. I guess we'll table this one twenty four annual report. Uh making a motion to approve the excellent written twenty twenty three annual report. Yes. 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 Any more?
That's all, actually.
Yes. Um. I do have one comment for the board, and I know it's late. Um as we've seen, we've had deviations, we have Mr. Ryan has to recuse himself from Mr. Akins, who's here a lot. Attendance is paramount. Right, we only have this once a month, people are depending on us. If you have a problem, make sure you email Sheila, myself, as soon as possible. Because we have to have have to have seven. Right, it's once a month, make time.
Well, I I really always want to have none. Every time you said.
Yeah.
No, I I know, no, and I I know, and I I know what you mean, and I appreciate you mentioning it. Um these are, these are really important things for people's lives and um. You know, we we see that tonight, and sometimes it really takes, you know, a skip to say, I don't think I want to do that, or Frank to say. I don't know what he said.
Well, I haven't been there so far.
Something you said.
What tonight?
Uh no, but it really helped, the discussion really helped get us where we need to go, and that's why everybody's valued, and that's why having everybody here is so important. Um and we're saying that for the people that are here, it's a thing.
Exactly, these are not the people that is. But we take a lot of time in figuring out the calendar to. Adjust for. Holidays, schools, religious things, so. That's the time to make your voice known when the meeting's gonna be. Yep, that's all I have, second.
Sir, that's your turn, Mr. Akins, there's the um, and a mission I don't on here for the uh orders.
Yeah, I know, I wanted to do it tonight, and I was told.
Can we continue uh to?
Oh, absolutely.
Trying to keep carrying that.
Especially, we we're going to have to, this basement thing is is killing us. I feel responsible with language.
So Jordan, I I've spoken to um to Josh, and I I told him that I thought that we needed to set up a couple of committees, including the ad hoc with regard to residential. Um Brian is hopefully gonna be spearheading and ad hoc with regard to commercial. Um and so there's gonna be a time where we're gonna ask you to sit with us, hopefully with that committee and present those ideas. Um I've looked at the thoughts that you have that you put together with Joe, and they're all really good, and they all really require. Um thought, I I don't think there's anything on your list that doesn't warrant review, and I think your stuff is really easier than some of the other things. Um because it's based on what you're seeing day to day, um so we're gonna get to it, and and we appreciate what I thought you put into it.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.